Call the meeting to order. Mr. Denae, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Please rise, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please. We'd better get some help over there, somebody help her call the roll. Never mind, I don't want to see you painful like that. Mr. Azzi, would you take the roll calling?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, if I can help. Mayor Koschel.
Here.
Councilmember Guston. Councilmember Zadra. Councilmember Sparazza. Councilmember Dorch. Councilmember Iasi. Councilmember Hesjeff.
Okay.
Missing, thank you.
We have a quorum. At this time, we'll go to public comment. You have some public comment cards for me, Madam Secretary. Eddie Lorton.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and I'd also like to welcome you, Mr. Klinger. Thank you. And I ended up, I'm here to speak on an agenda item that's later, actually, but as far as the general win, I wanted to welcome Mr. Klinger. And also, I ended up seeing in the paper here how, I would just hope that we're going to be business friendly coming up, especially on this agenda item, because lately, we've had problems, and I know it's hard for you to catch up on this two-year battle we've had here on this certain agenda item, especially on staff reports. It'll put in, like on one part, it said, "I didn't agree to go to these meetings any longer because it was biased." So if that's all you get out of me in six minutes, you don't get the full gist of it. So, but I did want to also state that here in the paper, they mentioned the fact that revenue was up everywhere in gaming except for Washoe County, okay? And part of that problem is, is we're not really, but we're coming around finally, which I'm glad about, because now we ended up, we did do a beer garden thing and stuff like that, but we got street vibrations back, hopefully, hot August nights. It makes me proud and happy to be here. And just so, I hope we don't try these $150,000 fees for the police department, so we lose these things. They are the customer. I hope we can make everybody happy, but we do need to promote, which is coming up, this is a party town. And that's what we're not promoting, like Vegas and stuff like that. I hope we can learn from their business model, and they tried to do the family-friendly thing, look what happened to Vegas. So I believe in being fair to people, but when people move in the middle of the downtown corner and complain about noise, because there's slum lords that have single pane windows, and they don't inform them it's an entertainment district, then I don't feel sorry for those people. So I look forward to talking on the other agenda item, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Jeffrey Friedas.
I would like, I would like to talk about energy and...
Introduce yourself for the record, please, sir.
Jeffrey Allen Fredas. All right, just say you take a fan, and you put magnets on the end of the blades, and you put magnets on the inside of the carriage. Now you've got a motor that's working by itself. Make that big enough, just say 20 yards, whatever, make the axle an alternator, you're making all kinds of energy. And I've got so many more ideas, it's just, I don't know, I've never really speak in front of a bunch of people before.
That's all right, you take your time.
But, um, yeah, I've got a lot of ideas on how to make energy without making it harmful or anything. And I've got ideas for vehicles, I've got ideas for all kinds of stuff, and I would like to talk, talk to you in the future days about the upcoming things I've got planned.
Well, get ahold of us, we'll get some staff member to get in touch with you, see if we can help you.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Robert Angris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council members. My name is Robert Angris, I'm attorney for Adonis Corporation, and Anthony Saris, he's asked me to provide you with a brief description of a proposal for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. City of Reno is an integral partner of the reclamation facility. As this council is undoubtedly aware, millions of dollars were expended to acquire gas recovery and power generation equipment and capability. Yet each, this equipment sits idle, and its capability has not been realized. The result is the frustration of these efforts, the failure of return on investment, and the situation with where the environmental concerns fall short of the city's green action plan. Huge quantities of usable gas are being flared off continuously. We're suggesting a reversal of this situation through our proposal. Beyond the environmental concerns are the fiscal. We don't know how much the idle equipment costs, or the power bill each month, but we know that both are substantial, and that the city and Sparks would be better off if this were reduced or eliminated. Adonis Corporation has the technology to use its own equipment and the present equipment of the facility to make it functional for its original purpose and achieve very substantial savings, and all at no cost to the facility. Adonis will guarantee that the contract will be at no cost and only through the savings achieved. The facility shall not be responsible for any upfront costs and not be out of pocket one penny. Key provisions are the use of Adonis's own technology and equipment with the existing idle equipment of the facility, creating reserves and maintaining the equipment and for the necessary replacement of the equipment, removing the burden of the unused equipment and its replacement. They will employ natural gas compression technology to use excess gas for forklifts and city vehicles. Their only compensation will come from the savings from the gas recovery. They'll provide all necessary contributions to ensure that there are no legal or financial liabilities to the cities of Reno and Sparks, and they'll do it all in a manner consistent with the stated objectives of the facility and Reno and Sparks. In closing, Adonis Corp... Excuse me, Adonis Corporation submits that it's uniquely capable of achieving this proposal. They're a local, part of our community, and they can begin as soon as necessary approvals can be effected. We ask the council to do its part to place the proposal on an agenda, or put us together with any legal counsel for the various legislative and administrative bodies as may be necessary. Thank you.
Contact my office, and we'll get you involved with the staff that you need to be working with at the sewer plant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border, and for the new people in the audience, I have attended... Here I am, speaking in the first person, what's with that? Sam has spent virtually every single city council meeting since 1994. He's got 4,575 public testimonies, some of them good, some of them not so good. Thanks for the chortle back there, that was good. Anyway, I'm going to juxtapose today between the Supreme Court and my old friend Bob Dylan. The Supreme Court updated freedom of speech, First Amendment, by saying, "As Americans, we have the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open," and a few more things. So I'm just going to be a little robust and wide open, and I'm going to dust off an old song that my buddy Bob Dylan taught me a long time ago. And by the way, lots of folks have been asking me to bring my guitar and welcome our new, the brand-new people, not brand-new, but the new people to City Hall. There's a couple of them. Running the operation, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Dylan, yep. Robust and wide open, as I said. By the way, I've got to put on my other hat now. I am sick and tired, and so are, and maybe even Mr. Guston. I am sick and tired of this City Hall picking on the police and the firemen, and blaming our, I'll say, unpleasant budget situation, blaming them, blaming the police and the firemen for our police, for our budget problems. And they're not without sin, there's some things that can be changed there, but I'm telling you right now, the real culprits are the folks who put us in this position by spending our taxes like a bunch of drunken jarheads. So, things are going to get better, I can tell right now, because we've got a change of command coming on here. We got Koschel, Klinger, and Chizzle. Koschel, Klinger, and, where is Mr.?
He hadn't started yet.
Mr. Chizzle, the new budget manager.
He hadn't started yet. Thank you very much. Don't. Oh, sorry, sir, I didn't, I didn't realize my mic was still open. Oh, Lord, here we go to approval of the agenda. Before we do, though, pulled items, we have to open up item F2 first before we pull it, and we'll do that when we get there. Consent items, item C16 will be heard after item E2. Proclamation today, Mr. Azzi will do proclamation. And then we have item E1, presentation, we'll have that after the joint meeting of the Reno City Council Downtown Alcohol Advisory Committee. Presentation, Northern Nevada Special Events Coalition will be heard, and then we'll do E2 after that. Public comment at 12:00 noon, items F1, F3, 4, 5, and 6. Item F2 has a time certain. Okay? Any other changes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did you say you have a lot of public comment on L5?
I thought I had some, I don't have any sheets on L5. Do you have some? Please bring them up to me now.
If we have a lot, maybe we can move that up after consent and...
Yes, we can, and then you can make a comment about it. I can't believe somebody didn't want to sit here all afternoon.
I'll move to approve the agenda with those changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second? Oh, I didn't hear you. All in, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Denae, you had something on L, I mean, on consent agenda you want to say? Oh, yes, yes. I'm jumping around too much. Okay, approval of the agenda, we did that. Now we'll go to approval of the minutes. Any changes, Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify, on the June 22, 2011 minutes, page 20 of 29, on the capital project surcharge to $2, it was in my motion to, number one, require that the council determine priorities for maintaining and improving facilities along with the stakeholders, and number two, require a two-thirds vote of the council to approve the recommended improvements, which are reflected in the minutes, but I want to make sure that that's why it was continued from last week, the ordinance, because it's still not in there from what I saw, but it is reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
And that was the motion that was approved.
And then when we go final motion, make it again, and so we'll put it in there. Okay? Motion for approval of the minute, Mr. President?
So moved.
Second, have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersment, Mr. Dorch, Mr. Guston.
No disclosures at all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to the consent agenda, Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and along with Mayor Koschel, one of the most trusted people in Nevada government. And what we have here is a consent agenda where they're going to vote on a whole bunch of things all at once, things that are supposed to be housekeeping and mundane affairs. And I'm not trying to be critical, but I am pointing out that, for instance, on item C2, which would be voted on without any discussion, on item C2, they're going to accept a grant, which is basically a gift of a huge amount of money in this case, $360,000 from the Department of Transportation. It would seem like something like that should be, should see the light of day, and of course, that's just the US Department of Transportation, they've got so much money, they don't even know this is missing. But lots of times, people come in here and give grants to various functions, and it's on the consent agenda, and then nobody ever hears about it. At any rate, I'm in favor of the general consent agenda, because most of it looks like stuff that's going to be, things that need to be done to make sure that the small things are taken care of. For instance, here's something that's, this, this would be great if this works, $75,000 for a traffic signal controller cabinets, a whole bunch of them. Hopefully, those controller cabinets will control the traffic signals, so that you don't have to stop at every single red light, well, excuse me, you're supposed to stop at red lights, that you don't have a red light every time you come up to a traffic signal. Two things down here, that I'm sure that people are always asking about, you've got the balloon races and the air races, two of the very first things that, that almost created Reno to be what it is now. The air races, I actually even used to fly in the air races, and then the balloon races from 25, 30 years ago. And people wonder, how much money are we giving, or, you know, donating, so that the balloon races and air races can continue on? I bet nobody out in TV land even knows. At any rate, $15,000 of our, each of our ta, of our taxes is going to each one of these operations, and that's a good thing. That's a really good thing, when you put it in the perspective of how much money is given to, for instance, Art Town, and I've got nothing against Art Town, but I guarantee you, the Reno air races and the balloon races bring in far more, far more outside money to our community than Art Town could ever dream of bringing in. Again, I'm not speaking against Art Town, but Art Town is probably, I would venture to say, 90% local people going, and if a local person is going to something at Art Town, guess what? That means that they're not going down to Pizza Haberdashery down there to buy stuff or the Pizza, Pizza Parlor. So I'm in favor of the consent agenda, but I think the people ought to know about that part of it.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment, I'll bring it back to table. Any items on a poll for discussion under the consent? Mr. President?
Yeah, C11 and 17 through 21.
C11, 17 through 21.
17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, yep.
Any others?
Move to approve the remaining items.
All right, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. C11.
Yeah, just a couple of questions on this, for staff. Says that it's coming out of the general fund instead of the street fund, in the staff report.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. The, the budget for the materials, for the replacement parts for signals, is a general-funded budget item, that is, that is in our fund.
Okay, can that come out of the street fund?
Those would be an allowable expense for a street fund. I'll, I can take a review of that, if you'd want me to bring that back.
Yes, and that was my first question. Then my second question, I know, council, who's on the RTC now? Is it Councilman Iasi and Guston? I mean, is this something we had talked about, synchronization of the, the street signals? Is this something that should, really RTC should be funding, and, and not the city? I mean, isn't this something that we should be looking, looking to do with RTC?
Actually, I think it's a very good question. It's a discussion topic that Councilman Iasi and I and Mr. Flansburgh had earlier today. There's going to be a workshop with the City of Reno and the RTC coming up sometime in September. This is certainly what the kind of issue we're going to put forward. Councilman, you had a little more to add to this, and I think strength is the case about not necessarily developing new streets, but taking care of the ones. If you add that to it, I think it'd be important for this discussion.
Yes, one of the things we were discussing in RTC, that with the street and highway funds, it shouldn't just be building new streets and highways, but fixing our existing intersections, and this is one of the major discussions we're going to have in our September meeting.
I mean, is this something that, and I know we need this, but is this something that we should take in front of the RTC to see if, if they would fund it?
I don't know if we need it tomorrow.
I think that's a discussion we could, there's a workshop that's going to be scheduled in September with RTC, we're going to have, talk about several items. This is something that could be brought up at that time.
Can we postpone this?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and, yes.
For 90 days?
Yeah. 60, how about 60?
60?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd go ahead and move to continue this, and see if our members of the RTC can put this on their agenda for review.
So your motion to extend it for 60 days?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C17.
Yeah, and I think, Renee, we had gone over this last council meeting, I just want to lump these all together, because I wanted to hear from our broker on this, and staff did get us the staff report, thanks for the information, because I wanted to get some information, Mr. Mayor, like on, on C20, and I guess, asking for guidance from the manager's office and, and the city attorney's office. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking on 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 right now, because these are all the third-party contracts we have for insurance. But the supplemental for the staff report, Renee, if you could go through 17 first for me, on the workers' compensation, what do they actually do? So if someone's injured on the job, the responsibility under 17, they administer the claims?
Yes, Renee, we're just Director of Human Resources. CCMSI is the third-party administrator, and they actually handle all of the claims, they evaluate the claims, and if they're accepted, then they pay the particular providers, and they interface with the injured employee, all through the workers' compensation process.
Okay, and they're actually proposing an increase to review each bill, from 50 cents to, $7.50 to $8?
Yes, excuse me, but the overall claims administration is going to be the same as it is currently.
Okay, so is there an increase in costs, or no?
There is an increase in cost if they have to go back and, and make adjustments on a particular bill, they've increased that slightly. But the overall claims administration increase cost is not, it is set at $102,500.
And then what is the SCHIP reporting? $25 per positive hit.
Yes, that is, they're required to report to the federal government any claims that are paid and processed, so that the government can compare that to Medicare, Medicaid, any of the federal medical type programs.
So it's not double-charged?
No.
And then the SIA recovery?
Yes, that is if they recover monies because of things that they previously evaluated, they were paid, and then the administrator wants to go further and try to negotiate with the providers and get a larger reimbursement. And then to go that, to do that extra work, then the TPA would, or the third-party administrator would get a percentage of that recovery amount, up to 15%.
And is that the same as what they currently get?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have on that one, Mr. Mayor.
Give me a motion, please.
I'll go ahead and move for approval on C17.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. C18.
Yeah, and then C18, this is for the HHP to do the, as the administrator for that particular health insurance plan, Renee?
Yes, that's correct.
And they're actually reducing their costs to $20?
Yes, they are.
From 25?
Correct.
Can you tell me what the large-case management is?
Large-case management is for high-dollar claims that take a lot more time in, in administering, it's, it's a lot more complicated, just because there's usually a lot of ongoing treatment and so forth.
So is the $20 charge assessed to us whether the employee has a claim that month under their...
Yes.
...medical plan?
Yes.
So wouldn't that average out, because I'm assuming that most employees don't have claims every single month? So then they're charging in addition for large-case management?
The large-case management is in addition to the, the monthly charge per employee, which is the $20. It's over and above that, because they supply additional resources for that.
Okay, and so how much, how many employees do we have on the, the HHP? Do we know?
I believe we have about 850 employees on HHP.
So if we're saving $5 per month, do we have the, the cost savings in the staff report? I didn't see that anywhere, I saw that the 204, but how much is that going to save us for this fiscal year?
You know, I don't have the total savings, but it's $5 per month, times 850, times 12.
So it's quite a bit.
Correct.
All right, I just want to point that out, Mr. Mayor, that we're actually getting a savings on the HHP plan for our medical plan.
Give me a motion, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. 19.
Yeah, 19, Renee, is this on our tort claims?
No, this is for medical excess loss insurance.
Okay, so how is that different than, than...
Actually, I'm, excuse me.
C20.
C20 is, is my item. C19 is...
Tracy's. Tracy, sorry.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. You a question, I'm sorry, Councilmember?
Is this for tort claims, Tracy? Because we have the, C20 is for the excess claims of what the, what we cover. What's C19? What does that cover the city for?
Let me get the coverage plan out here. This gives us quite a bit of excess loss coverage. It covers tort claims, you're accurate on that. It also covers errors and omissions. It covers employee benefit liability claims, so this is a very significant coverage for the city.
Okay, so this is above, did our tort cap rise to $100,000?
Yes, our tort cap will rise to $100,000 in the fall. Right now, it's at $75,000. So this really protects the city's self-insured retention of $1 million, and it gives us basically $5 million on top of that in coverage in the areas that the policy provides. I do have Wells Fargo here, if you have any questions of their outreach and determining the quotes, but it came in at a flat quote of $202,500, $202,500, which was the same as last year, and we were very happy about that. In addition, the coverage is significant because, let me do some of this stuff. It provides us additional coverages that some of the other policies we looked into did not, like terrorism and some other areas that are important for the city.
Okay. Move for approval, Mr. Mayor?
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Is that all of them?
No, C twenty, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And we got this one, and the question we went through, and staff had gotten this back from us. And my question was, and I guess I'm looking for the attorney or a manager, because we had paid the premiums of eight million three hundred and ninety-five thousand, and during that same time period, we had claims of four point six million. So if we were to set aside what we pay as the premium, the million dollars, I believe, a mil, it's slightly over a million dollars, would we be better off, just like we were with the self-insurance funded plan? And I understand that could go up. I mean, you see under the claims in oh three and oh four, which was our highest claims, still, we paid less in claims than we did for the premium for that particular year. And if you look at the average from oh three till today, we would have been, we would have been on the plus side over four million dollars.
Councilmembers, Frazee, yes, if you look at the totals, that's what you would see. The purpose for buying this type of insurance is to mitigate the uncertainty of loss. And, you know, the city had in the past eight years, the three years, in addition to the two that you mentioned, also oh seven, oh eight, where the paid claims were higher than the premium. And that is just a decision, a policy decision that the council would have to make if they're, if you're willing to tolerate that unpredictability and the loss.
The, I guess, Renee, how do other jurisdictions do this? Because it seems to me we'd be better off setting that money aside. We'd have four million dollars setting aside for the potential of those claims instead of paying the insurance premium.
As far as I know, other jurisdictions in the area, Washoe County.
I guess I want to hear from the brokers on this.
Maybe, Bob, you could come up and speak to that.
At least put a stopgap somewhere.
Yeah, it just seems like a lot of money.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Bob Moore for the record, with LP Insurance. We've been your employee benefits consultant for a number of years. I had brown hair when I first started to work with the city. In response to your question, the only public entity that I know of in Nevada that is self-insured without reinsurance is the state of Nevada. And there, in that situation, they have thirty-four thousand people on the group with limited benefit maximums. So it's a very stable, predictable group. Your question's a very good one, and it gives rise to another question, and it's what is the city's risk tolerance? None of us can tell you with any degree of certainty, how many claims are you going to have next year over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? Could have none, could have ten. If I could tell you that, I'd be making a sports book for a living. I just don't know, and no one knows. It's not unlike life insurance. If you didn't die last year, you'd waste money paying for the premium. I don't know. So it's sleep insurance, it gives you stability, it gives you some predictability on your budgeting process. But most public entities, all the ones I know other than the state, and direct answer to your question, have some sort of reinsurance.
But I also know that with, when people go and buy car insurance or anything else, after a good period of having a good driving record, the premium is discounted. And I see here that we've paid over eight million dollars, we've had claims of four million dollars, and you, I mean, that's four million dollars. I mean, when you come and give us a fee at the city, don't you take that into account? Is, okay, looking at the average of what the actual claims are?
Curiously enough, reinsurance is not experience-rated because the nature of the risk is so volatile. The question might be, if you had no accidents or claims in your car insurance, how come my car insurance rates went up last week, or last month, or last year? Because the risk is very volatile. You can have years where you'll have no claims at all, and you can, then you can have a couple of years where you just get overwhelmed with fortuitous claims of very large, large nature. So it's a very volatile risk. It's not necessarily experience-rated. The rate you're getting is not a function of your specific claims experience.
So if we start having claims in the two-million-dollar mark, you wouldn't come back and raise our premium?
I'm not going to say that. You know, I can't, I can't respond to the insurance marketplace. But generally speaking, they're never going to charge you a premium equivalent to prior periods' losses because the nature of the risk is simply too volatile.
But I'm sure you guys would come back if the claims were more than the actual premium over a period of time.
Well, not necessarily. Reinsurance is a very complex buy, and your question's a good one. Does it make sense to buy it or not? And that's, that gives rise to the question, what is your risk tolerance?
Mr. Frazee?
Well, I'm just doing some math on here, and I can see what Councilwoman Frazee's saying is over the ten years, the insurance companies made sixty-four percent profit. Over the last three years, it's sixty-nine percent profit. It seems like it's going up. And our rates have been, I mean, our experience has been going down.
I would not suggest that, your suggestion's not a good one. In a way disclaimer, we get no commission on this coverage at all. None of the coverage is replaced with the city of Reno, so we don't have a dog in this fight. Just want to give you some good advice. If you had the discipline to take that same amount of money and put it aside in a catastrophic claims reserve, might be a very prudent decision. If those claims that hit that reserve were less than a million one or whatever it is, then that would be a very wise decision. If they came in at a million five, million six, in retrospect, that would have been a very poor decision. And that's, that's something I can't tell you. I cannot predict with any degree of certainty how many large claims you're going to have next year. But mechanically, what you've suggested is certainly feasible and certainly doable. It comes back to risk tolerance.
Which, which insurance company is this with?
HCC Life.
And then what's their experience? I mean, are they in any trouble at all? Because we've bought insurance before, and when it comes time to pay out, it's, we're now bankrupt.
Oh, they're probably one of the three largest medical plan reinsurers in the world.
But somewhere I'll look at is we go through in the future, or look and see what our tolerance would be.
I just think so, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we're scraping for every penny and dime here, asking our groups to give concessions, doing all those things, and this is four million dollars over a period of time. And I understand, you never know with insurance, but I think that, that we've, we've got to examine and look at this. This is a huge cost for us every year.
Mr. Guston?
I understand the discussion, and it's a good discussion. The risk tolerance is the level for me. That, that's the cliffhanger for me. Let's say the other side of this, take the devil's advocate. Let's say we did not insure this year. We went over a million one. Where would the excess funds come from to pay those, those claims?
And I'm uncomfortable addressing this topic.
I think that would probably address our city manager.
Probably more.
It'd come out of our general fund, right?
That is correct. I believe that's where it would come from.
See, I, I think the discussion's good and appropriate to have, and hindsight's a great thing. If we'd have done this three years ago, when we did have the reserves, we're not in a position with reserves right now, so my risk tolerance is very low when it comes to this. I think, though, as the mayor just said, in, as a future item, it certainly makes sense. But it has to, I think, then advance with the, the financial stability of the city. Right now, I think Councilman Frazee makes an excellent idea, excellent suggestion about over the last years, four million dollars. But as, as the gentleman at the podium has said, there's no guarantee what's going to happen next year. And that's what worries me. If we do have an influx of these claims, and then where do we go to pay those? As we are scrambling for every dollar right now. So I, I don't have the, the risk tolerance this year, but I certainly could have it in the future.
Well, and the issue gets worse in 2014 when healthcare reform says you can't have any limits at all. Your lifetime maximum and your annual maximum would be unlimited, which is certainly a large number. So your liability would be for every
But they're not going to raise our rates because they don't go on.
You're self-insured. You're self-insured, so there would be no rates to raise, other than what you internally charge yourself.
Well, I think as we go into the future, we should look at this and study it and see if it makes sense or doesn't make sense.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to move forward today, but
Mr. Deutsch.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we were to do away with this coverage, would we have to have reserves set aside to cover these claims?
I would certainly recommend it.
And then, and then what would those amounts be? It'd probably be more than what our premiums are, I would assume, that we'd have to set aside.
Well, and that, that again, if we, the four million you're talking about, maybe, you know, there's could be some looking at. I just think we should study it as we go forward and look at it and see. You want to give me a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and approve for this year, but I would like this analyzed and looked at. And Andrew, you came from the state, so maybe we can get some information from there on, on how that works and how it's worked for them. So I'll go ahead and move to approve for this year.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'm going to second that with the discussion point that, as Councilwoman Frazee said. I don't know where it's going to be on your list of things to do, Andrew, but certainly by the time we have our annual retreat, which is about five months from now, this probably should be a topic we discuss at that time, if not sooner.
All right, I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Frazee's requested that we move item L five up.
C twenty-one, Mr. Sir, I'm getting through them.
Were you, excuse me, resolution?
Renee, yeah, C twenty-one, and thank you for giving me the information from last week. You had talked about in the staff report that there was, we could save about seventy thousand if we went with Superior. Also with MES, and you say sixty-four percent claims disruption and nineteen percent for MES. Can you, can you explain to me what that is?
Yes, Renee, we're just Director of Human Resources. When people have claims, it's with a certain provider, and if the network switches, because we switch plans, which is what would occur, the chances of that same provider following through would not necessarily be there. And the estimate based on the comparisons of the, of the three networks is that because there are fewer providers on the, on the other two plans, MES and Superior, that those people, those, those employees would have to find another provider. So it, quote, disrupts their, their service and their claims.
So MES, though, with MES, you said nineteen percent. Does that mean there's nineteen percent fewer doctors that they can choose from? Is that the only difference in service coverage?
In terms of providers, it's nineteen percent. But also there are plan benefit differences between MES, Superior, and what VSP is currently offering. And I think you have to look at those as well because even though there's a little more of a decrease in premiums for the city, what we're doing is shifting costs to the employees and their families. And when staff looked at this in light of all of the other things that are going on with employees, we're asking for concessions, we have raised the health premiums five percent. We've had some plan design changes in the medical plans. We felt that if we could still get, you know, a pretty solid discount on the current plan with the vision that it would be less disruptive to add one more thing onto employees.
Any other discussion? Ms. Adra?
Mr. Mayor, it relates to this one, but even more so to the prior one. I've suggested this in the past. Maybe this is indeed the time that we need to look at some of our self-insurance being co-opted with other entities, that being Sparks and/or Washoe County. Maybe now is the time that we could congregate our premiums and get kind of that cushion that we need. So that would be part of the discussion, Andrew, that we would want to move forward with at our retreat.
Mr. Deutsch.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify, Jess, you said that the savings was seventy thousand dollars, and I think the savings is more like twenty-six thousand dollars, correct?
Right, it's, it's more like twenty-seven, yes.
Yeah, if we picked a twenty-four month, a two-year period instead of the one-year period.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the twelve, twelve-month by VSP.
At the current premium.
Okay, yes, Mr. Frazee?
One question, I don't know if you have an answer to this, but currently for frames, which almost every eyeglass, you get frames, it covers a one hundred and twenty dollars for frames. This Vision Service Plan drops it down to forty-five dollars. So that seems like a big markup there to say it's the same to the person going in there. That's an extra sixty dollars, or eighty dollars.
Where are you seeing that, Councilman?
The center, right there, Vision Service Plan B, under Frames, right above Contacts. It said up to one twenty in the current, in the preferred plan.
Right, what you're looking at, you see in that same box, there's one column that says preferred and one column that says non-preferred. The preferred pricing is for those providers that are in the network. So Frames would be covered up to a hundred and twenty dollars in the network. If you go outside of the network, then they're only covered to forty-five.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
Have motion, second. Discussion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. A question came up last time from council, and I wanted to make sure you had the response before you completed your vote. NRS three thirty-two, one one five does allow insurance to be contracted from
Okay. I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we will move to item L five. Mr. Frazee?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know you have some public comment cards, and of course, we'll let everybody speak, but all I'm asking for here is the approval of staff time to go look at this and take out the neighborhood advisory board to discuss this issue. It's not to tear it down or anything like that, but we have a policy here at the city that I can't spend more than two hours of staff time without bringing it to council. And we've got to make sure that this is, if the neighborhood wants to keep it, to make sure it's done in a safe manner. So that's the only reason this is on the agenda, to get the staff time to look at it, not to tear it down or anything today.
Okay, all right. We do have some people who want to, Kevin Weir or Went? Kevin Weir or Went? I can't read you. Weir, okay, sir.
My name's Kevin Weir. I am one of the BMX riders from over there at the Little Course. And I really just wanted to come and offer any support that I can give to kind of get it legitimized and up and running, in whatever form that could be, whether it be doing some research to find out, you know, ways to do it safely, maybe even raise some money. I know money's an issue with the city, and I don't want it to get shot down just because of some funding issues. And that's pretty much all that I really have to say. I think some other people are going to tell you how wonderful it is, which
Okay, well, this is just to get time to
Yep, okay.
do studying stuff, so leave your name and number so we can get in touch with you.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much.
Jim Severt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members.
Your name, please.
My name is Jim Severt, and I'm here for agenda item L five, which is the BMX bicycle track. Mr. Iasi brought that up. I'm just here for support also. I've been involved with one that is actually in Washoe County now, in a Washoe County park. It's located in Sun Valley. I was instrumental in actually keeping it in the park when it became a park. And I just want to offer my services, anything that I can do to help keep this area for the kids, and just as much support as I can toward that. I do appreciate you bringing that up, bringing it to the table, actually. And I think myself, a lot of the parents and a lot of the people that use that, including myself, would love to keep it for the kids, make it a nice place that kids can go, can be safe. And I would love to leave my phone number and my information so that I can be a resource for you. a resource for you.
When you get through in a little while, go over to the Secretary, leave your name, address, phone number and stuff, and we'll be calling on you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Annie Munn?
Hi, I'm Annie Munn, and I recognize a lot of faces around here. I'm here for L5, too. I have lived in that neighborhood for sixteen years, and I walk by that track every single day almost with my dog, and I just wanted to say, day first, thank you for paying attention to it. Some of my neighbors right next door actually helped us start building that ten years ago, and I know that Kevin has worked really hard on making it as safe as you can for kids. I mean, all of us get out and do stuff. I love to ski, I love to ride my bike, and I know that there's always danger involved in just listening to you guys talk about liability. That's a real issue for people, and I realize a lot of the kids maybe don't think about how dangerous it can be. You know, on the ski hill, you can get hit. I got hit last year. So I always try to encourage the kids to wear their helmet and wear equipment to be safe over there, but I'm really glad it's there, and it's been fun actually watching the children build it. I have asked my neighbors, there really hasn't been anybody that has said to me, no, I don't want it there. Our home doesn't directly abut to the field, but we're in the adjacent field, so if there were problems, if there was drinking going on, I have never seen a motorized vehicle on that area, which I know is illegal. And currently, I think the big thing is that it's in no man's land. It does sit on a drainage area, but it's up above it, so it is not interfering with the drainage that the city built when the property was developed. And the only thing that I can think of is just the personal safety of the kids and young adults that use that area, that they be really cognizant of the fact that if they don't have a helmet on and proper protection equipment, they could be seriously injured. But I, anybody can get seriously injured at that type of an activity. So I'm really glad it's there, and I live right in the neighborhood. I have asked people, I bet that you probably did get some emails from people as far as being supportive of it, and it helps a lot to get the kids outside and spend some time doing the right stuff. So, I just wanted to come as a person who lives in the neighborhood and support it today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Barbara Finney?
Hi, my name's Barbara Finney. I'm a teacher with Washoe County Schools, and I am going full circle because my son rides that track. And if something isn't done with that track to keep it, there will be hell to pay in our family. He is there all the time. He is digging, he is building, he is working with the kids, he is involved in safety. I have EMT experience as an advanced EMT. I have trained him what to do in the event that somebody gets hurt, and these kids have their cell phones, they police it, they keep it clean, they have a set of rules. They are their own little corporation. This is a phenomenal thing. They design, they plan, they implement, they call on people who have the expertise, like Jim Severt, to see what they can do, or to look at what Jim has done, or to go over there and ride his, his jumps and then see what else can be done. And here's my son, has grown up at McQueen High School and has started building those jumps probably from day one. He has learned so much, he's learned how to grow up. He hasn't quite made it yet, but these, this kind of involvement is really what our kids need. The bicycle kids do not have a place to go in the northwest. They, they get in trouble, and my kid fortunately is staying off of the streets and on these jumps, and it is an outlet that is essential. So I'm requesting that you designate this property as a BMX park that would be used and developed by the public, by the kids, as they have been doing, with supervision of the city, and that you meet with these guys as a group and find out what's going on, and actually go over there, maybe covertly, and like Dave has probably done, and see what's going on and talk to them, and find out what a great thing this is for our community. The other thing is, yesterday, we were on, my son and I are online, and apparently Woodward, a worldwide training center, has bought Boreal Ski Area, and they have all kinds of athletic training that they do with students in gymnastics and BMX and just all kinds of activities. They're worldwide. They train the kids who could successfully compete in the Olympics. And so here we are, we are sitting in a perfect situation to develop Reno into more of an athletic town, just like the kayaking on the river, these sports pool events. I am an art teacher, I like to design things. I am going to help you folks in any way I can.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Aziz.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, I've, I've received no complaints about this, it's just something the city became aware of, so we have to assume liability once we become aware of it. So we put up no trespassing signs to tell people they have to be responsible themselves while we're going through this process. We'll probably be going to a Neighborhood Advisory Board, whether, I don't know when it'll be, July or August, and talk about that there, and we'll probably put a notice on site so people can go up there and talk about that. But you're exactly right, we do have a Whitewater Park, but it was professionally designed, and we understand the liability upfront. This might be a product of those kids being too good for their own, for their own good, because it looks like a really nice course, and it's been going on for ten years. But now that we know about it, we have to deal with it in that manner. So, we're going to look at it and see what we can do, so I'll request, I'll make a motion that we can spend more than two hours of staff time working on this issue.
And you're not making a request to tear it down, to bulldoze it or anything?
No, no, no.
So we want to make that very clear. I, I love the, I love the kids' attitude, because usually, this is one of those projects where they built it, then they ask for forgiveness. And I really like it, and I think what they're doing is great, and we'll work it out and work with them. So I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Aziz, proclamations. Item D1.
Who's going to get this one, Mayor?
Um, I'm not sure. Is it not on there?
Anybody here from Art Poses?
Oh, good.
Come on up.
Tell them, you read this, and then you get to say what you want to say.
We'd like to pass this to your...
Okay, you want to do it while I'm reading it?
No.
Okay.
Whereas during the month-long Art Town Festival, PetFolio Magazine will be holding their 11th Annual Art Pos at McKinley Arts and Cultural Center on July 17, 2011. And whereas the Art Pos event paints a pet-friendly picture of downtown Reno and provides a festival environment where expert knowledge and awareness is shared with pet owners, PetFolio is helping to enrich and save the lives of animals we love. PetFolio's Art Pos is dedicated to the animal world, bettering the lives of both pet owners and pets alike. And whereas PetFolio Magazine was established in 1997 as a free, bimonthly magazine serving northern Nevada, now in its 14th year of print, PetFolio is designed to inform, educate, and serve as a communication network for animal lovers across the region. PetFolio helps to raise funds for local animal rescue organizations in Nevada through its print publication and annual Art Town Event, Art Pos. And whereas the celebration of Art Pos marks a high point of pet interest in our community, we display how pets represent protection, companionship, and loyalty to a family. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Robert A. Kuchel, Senior, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, hereby proclaim Sunday, July 17, 2011, as a day to honor PetFolio's Art Pos.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this all. Here, she wants a picture, you guys with that.
You do?
Now, anything you want to say? Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Michelle McCarty, for the record. I am the event coordinator for Art Pos in addition to being the editor of PetFolio Magazine. We'd like to say thank you very much, this is a very big honor for us, and we appreciate it. Additionally, we'd like to invite everyone to our Art Pos event, Sunday, July 17, obviously, at McKinley Arts and Cultural Center. Bring your dogs, it's the only dog-friendly Art Town Event. We were grandfathered in years ago, and don't worry, we have all our liability insurance. We, we got you covered. So come, bring your dogs, enjoy music, wine tasting, silent auction. All of the money that's generated from this event goes back to three nonprofit organizations that are chosen by PetFolio's readers every year. This year, it's the U.S. Wolf Refuge, which is out in Sparks, the Feline Rescue of Northern Nevada, which is out in Verdai, and the Boxers and Buddies, also here in Reno. So very small organizations that help a lot of animals that don't get a lot of big funding. So we're very happy and pleased to be able to give them all of our money, and we're shooting for seven thousand dollars this year to give back. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Landis Whitmer, publisher and founder of PetFolio Magazine, and again, I extend a very warm and heartfelt thank you for, during this course. It's a great, great recognition and great support for the animals in our community. And when I started Art Pos, that's what I wanted to do, I wanted, I mean, when I started PetFolio and then later Art Pos, I wanted to celebrate good pet ownership, and I think that's what we do, and we create a day where people are very proud of their animals and very pleased to present their families and the fun that they can have together. So please come, and thank you again very, very much.
Thank you, enjoy yourself. We, we have a time certain for E1, so let's move forward on the agenda to E2, Mr. Houghton.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much, members of council. Mr. Klingler, welcome. Good to see you, and we look forward to working with you. For the record, my name is Mike Houghton, I'm president and CEO of the Reno Air Racing Association, and today I'm pleased to be spokesman for the Northern Nevada Special Events Coalition. It is a, a group of special events that have gotten together and formed about a year and a half ago, and the purpose of our little presentation today is to kind of give you an update as to where we are, where we're heading, and what our primary contribution is to the, the community. We consist of eleven events, the Reno Tahoe Open, the Italian Festival, Shakespeare up at the lake, the air races, Street Vibrations, Hot August Nights, the Great Reno Balloon Race, the Reno Rodeo, the Nugget Bestin West Rib Cookoff, and then North Lake Tahoe's Convention Visitors Authority at Incline, as well as the missing logo here is the RSCVA, and just recently, we have brought them into the group, and we are all working together to raise the overall level of professionalism within special events in our community, and our focus is to work together to become more financially stable as a industry for our community, as well as to work through and support each other in promoting our events throughout the community. With us, with me today, I have Dave Wilburn, and Dave is Director of Business Operations for the Reno Air Races, Tony Marini, Managing Director for Hot August Nights, Alan Kingsley, who is now breathing much easier that his event is over, the Executive Director for the Reno Rodeo, and we have Pilar Aldo Alda Laura, I'm getting better at it, she's President of the Board for the Reno Balloon Race, as well as we have Tara Travato, representing R&amp;R Partners. She's Account Manager, and they are doing a lot of pro bono work with the special events community here. There we go. Our overall contribution within the community is, as our group, about three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in combined economic impact. So it makes a, the, the events community makes a very significant contribution, at least from these eleven events, and then just imagine if we added every single event that's going on in the community, what the economic impact would be to us from everyone. And as we grow, the numbers we will be able to accumulate and reflect a, a better representation of the entire community. We have more than five thousand volunteers that help put on the events in our community, and six hundred thousand dollars is given back to the nonprofits in 2010 alone. So, the special events in your community are very active in generating economic impact, as well as helping the nonprofits in keeping money in our community and doing work throughout. Combined, the Northern Nevada events, our eleven events, bring more than two million fans each year to enjoy our events. If I was to make a wild guess, more than fifty percent of those fans that are out there at our events are probably tourists coming into our market. So there's a very sizable contribution to the basic tourism economy that our special events are contributing each year. Our message to the community, to you today, we're not here asking for money, we are here merely on an informative basis. It's truly up to our community to continue the legacy of our Northern Nevada events. Our attendance is extremely important from the local community. Without local support, none of our events could, could succeed on an ongoing basis. So we do need our locals to come out and support us. We need support from the governmental entities that are a part of this community. We enjoy being partners with you and helping to put on these events and to benefit our local citizens, as well as provide an in-market amenity to many of the tourists that do come to our community. We are also going to be spending a lot of time hyping the fact that we're very proud of our community, and we are very proud of the events that we do put on. We have a, a variety of world-class events that draw tourists as well as attention to our community in a very positive way. And we want to work, again, in the future with you. We are a community-owned activity, and we want to encourage everyone to step up to the plate, continue the special events effort, make sure that we do remain very healthy, and continue to grow into the future. So myself and, and my compatriots that are here today are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have, or we'll get out of your hair and let you do your business.
Questions for Mr. Houghton? Mr. George?
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you want to touch on what's going on, you guys, I know you guys are working cooperatively real well together. If you want to just touch on what's going to be happening here in a couple weeks out at the RTO, kind of let everybody know.
Thank you, Councilman George. Yes, we're playing well together, which is a, a nice thing to see. At the RTO, our compatriot out there, Janice Molly, came up with an idea that they wanted to do some extensions to their event. They've got a lot of Golf Channel time available. The Golf Channel is looking for additional programming, so all of the events in the Coalition, as well as some others, have gotten together on, on the practice holes, on first and the third practice hole. We're going to have a major display of all the special events that are part of our community, and that will end up as being content that'll go on the Golf Channel and providing some additional exposure for our efforts as events, but more importantly, shining the light in a very positive way on our community. So, thanks for asking about that, Dwight. We're real excited about the partnership. We've had a number of joint promotions at all of the events that are going on in town, and we're, we're proud of the fact that we're making some real positive progress for all of us, and I do want to compliment staff for the great job that police and fire are doing in stepping up with a new attitude, and it's a cooperative partnership attitude that is helping Hot August Nights move forward very positively. I know the balloon races, the air races, all of us are really supportive of the very positive working relationship that is coming out of our efforts together as a team. So, thanks a lot.
Any other questions? I'd just like, hey, Dave, Dave. Turn your mic on. Hot August Nights is going to do a real study. They're working with the university to do a real study on the economic impact of Hot August Nights. Isn't that new? Sorry about that.
I guess you don't want to say anything, then.
No, I just, that's all I wanted to say, is I'm just so excited that we're going to get a report that we can finally believe in.
Of course, you should have to disclose that you're on the board now.
Oh, yes, I must disclose that I'm now the Board of Directors of Hot August Nights.
And we in the events community welcome that bias, sir.
Thank you all very much.
I think I'd like to just echo Mayor's comments in this way. You met with our subcommittee before, you put on a meeting out at the Washoe Grill, which I thought brought a lot of the community together in an understanding of how we need to move forward together, and I think the organization that you have, again, it doesn't encompass everybody, you mentioned, but you give some authenticity to the statements that are made by various people, as the mayor's talking about, in terms of, of income that's generated by this very, various events. The one thing you didn't talk about today, which, which really resonated with me out at Washoe, and then when you spoke to our, our subcommittee, is the importance of the local participation. And, and I know you, you talked about the success or failure of events predicated on local participation. So even though you didn't mention it today, I hope that's a, a resonating theme that continues throughout your presentation, because I think that's extremely important. People need to know how important their contribution is.
Excellent point. One of the things you will see us going out and promoting as a group, the events, is that we are doing that locally. Individually, we're out in the rest of the world promoting our individual event, but collectively, we're trying to talk to the local citizens that, that live in the Truckee Meadows. collectively, we're trying to talk to the local citizens that live in the Truckee Meadows, because they make the difference between a good year and a great year. And on the issue of research and understanding the value of events, we all will do our own portion of research about our individual events, but collectively, we know that there are some opportunities for all of the events to participate in some research, and we will be back to city council, as well as the County Commission and the City of Sparks, for a cooperative endeavor to get out and begin to evaluate the real impact economically of the events to each government entity as well. And we think that joint participation from all of us getting into that endeavor is going to help us quantify the real value of what we think events do bring to the community.
And the citizens of the community need to understand how special events like this are so great for our community, because right now, there's not a lot of convention business floating around. And the more special events we have, and the better off we pull them, the better off we are.
In the interim, the special events have got to be bringing the people into town, and that will make a difference.
Councilman Zadra?
Mike, when we were out at the joint meeting that you had six months ago at the Washoe Grill, one thing that became pretty evident to me is the numbers, that there isn't or wasn't continuity as to counting their attendance between events, and what qualified as a local versus a visitor. Have you seen that disparity tighten, or is there now a little bit more consistency in the way numbers are, will be calculated?
There's not going to be any consistency until we put together a collective program. But in the interim, I believe you'll, speaking for my fellow event producers, we all want to provide good, solid, believable numbers. So in that endeavor, we are all working to quantify things more accurately. We've got an easier job at the air races. We're a gated event, so got a ticket, I can tell you how many tickets we collected and how many people we had out at the races. Hot August Nights has a more difficult time because of the multitude of venues and the number of people that flow between venues. There is some research methodology that we think we can help with in the longer term to have a common methodology for all of us, whether we're gated or whether we happen to be an open event. So we want to, we do want to move forward with some good numbers that will help you. Generally speaking, though, I think in a sweeping generalization, events, everyone can agree, are economically very important to this community. We need to keep us healthy, and we need to keep us moving forward to grow while, on the other side, we begin to build on some other businesses that do need to fill in on the convention and the meeting market business and help bring us back economically.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Fraz, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you're missing Art Town up there, Michael, is part of the coalition, because I think they're an important event as well. I mean, you just see the activity going on in July, but just wanted to follow up on something you said about the overtime. And hopefully, later in the agenda, Mr. Mayor, shortly, we'll be approving contracts, because our public safety officer stepped up to the plate and reduced the overtime amount for Hot August Nights, which I think is going to help a lot, and that was one of the things we heard. So I think that's going to help with our special events coming up.
And that was to my comment about how great the staff has been and changing attitudes and looking at things and understanding that cooperatively, we can get the job done, but we don't have to use as many people and dollars and resources to do that. And Art Town will no doubt become a part of the coalition. We started small, and we're just kind of gathering our legs and our strength so that we can be more open to a balance of events. Managing 11 different opinions is a challenge, and we'll add to that, though.
Again, thank you.
Good. Thank you all very much. Appreciate the support, and enjoy the special events season.
You bet. Mr. Mayor, we passed over E1 because that has a time certain, so I know I can move to the effigent items, and we can find out if all the notices have been sent.
First of all, we need to jump up and take care of C-16 first.
Oh, okay.
Because that was supposed to be approved after the special events coalition. So Chair will entertain a motion.
To approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve, C-16. Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll go to item F1. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
That's weird.
That's okay. I'll take that for a yes. Having no public comment cards, I'll bring them back to the table for discussion. Item F1. Any questions on item F1? Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Let me see here, item F?
F-1-1.
F-1-1.
That is Bill Number 6757, in ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code and Title zoning, the zoning is equal point 06 to the site bounded by Interstate 395 of the north, the Grand View Terrace subdivision to the east, North Virginia Street to the south, and Perdido Drive to the west from MU and.
BTC mixed-use North Virginia Transit Corridor to SF-6 Single Family Residential, 6,000 square feet, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to refer. Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent on item F2?
Yes, that's weird. Yes, and no correspondence.
Okay, I'm going to take that as a yes. Now we then ask to.
Mr. Mayor, can we get the city attorney or someone to put that in the record? I mean, I just don't want any technicalities in the future, so if we can have that.
Right, and I don't know if there's somebody that can substitute in for the clerk in that capacity to provide the information, because they're the ones who received it. I don't have personal knowledge of it.
Proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Okay, so you just sit there for a minute and work the mic for him, or tell staff from upstairs to come down and take care of it. All right, item F2. We've asked to pull this item. We've opened up the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's an open the item and continue it to a date certain in the future.
Okay.
What date?
First meeting in August.
Is that?
First meeting in August. Staff shook their head over there.
What's that date?
24.
Is it 24?
For the record, Maureen McKissick, we expect to bring that back on August 24th.
August 24th.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move to continue this to the August 24th meeting.
Have a second on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F3. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given, a letter of concern was received from Jeff Church.
From Jeff Church? You have to speak into the microphone. Let the sick one move over, and you move over closer to the mic.
A letter of concern was received from Jeff Church.
All right. Having no public comment cards, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion.
Excuse me, could we have the overhead? Renee Brunges, Director of Human Resources, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and city manager, you have before you an item to approve a collective bargaining agreement for two years with the Reno Police Protective Association. And a couple of things that I'd like to go over. The total concession in this agreement per year is approximately $1.7 million. This is equivalent to approximately 7.5% salary decrease. And I just want to differentiate, it's not 7.5% salary plus salary-related benefits, just 7.5% equivalent to salary. And that would be the $1.7 million decrease each contract year. There is one clarification in the staff report under the section, the primary changes that will be in effect from July 1st, 2011, through June 30th of 2013, is that first bullet. Just want to clarify that this item is pay for holiday worked at 1.5 times the hourly rate instead of 2.5 times the hourly rate. And all of the other items in the staff report are the same. The full cost of the collective bargaining agreement for two years is $70,868,990. The cost for year one is $35,462,363. The cost for year two is $35,406,627.
Any questions? Mr. Fraz?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I did, I, you know, there was the article in the paper about the 1.375 decrease, which I thought was very misleading, because it's substantially more when you go through the uniform allowance, the field force pay, the Hot August Nights overtime, the $25 bi-weekly sick leave incentive, and another big one of the holiday, being paid at 1 times the hourly rate of base pay. I think we get there. In addition to that, within the police department, if you can recall, the chief had come up, and they had done things within their department as far as special pay and special assignments that they eliminated, that gets them up to that 7.5%. So I think the article in the paper about the 1.375, although I understand, was the PERs contribution. I think the overall contract is good for the city, and I just want to say, I want to thank Jason and his team for stepping up to the plate and really helping us during these difficult times and making those concessions. It took us a while to get there, but I think this is good for everyone, Mr. Mayor, and for the police department.
Yes, Ms. Zadra.
Mr. Mayor, when we've had discussion at the labor meetings, we've talked about at a future time, which would really be beneficial for the community, so I'm just letting them know that in the future, rather than talking percentages, which creates this kind of confusion, it's the total amount that we need from each of the operating areas, so that we'll be able to clearly identify, and people will recognize that one operating group versus another bargaining unit gave up dollar-wise what was needed from their budget, and not just refer to percentages. So that clarity will be very helpful in the future.
Absolutely, Councilwoman.
And I also want to commend Jason and the team and the whole police department working with us on this. They're tough. You're tough negotiators. I won't, I'm not going to take that away from you, but you've been very fair in working with us, and we really appreciate the things that you're coming up to make things better. And thank y'all very much. Mr. Guston?
If I may just echo some of the comments, that they have been, from the beginning, willing to sit down and work towards the end. You say, we went back and forth and up and down in it, but we're all working towards the common goal, and that was the, I thought that was the signal sent early by this collective bargaining unit, so I'm appreciative of that. I want to clarify just a couple of things. Maybe I misheard it, so I will do, ask that question. I heard, Renee, you said in the first bullet point is 1.5 times versus 2.5 times, and Councilman Fraz, you just said 1 times base pay? It is 1.5, right?
Yeah, it's 1.5. They've gone down.
Okay. I must have misheard that, okay. And then, as far as, I would assume, because I got the staff report when everybody else did Friday, it does say in the staff report 1.375, and I had mentioned that comment earlier, that percentages, I know they were well-intended when we did, and we all were in lockstep with that, the percentages we needed, but as the intricacies of the negotiations got going on, they got more muddied. And I think if we get to the dollar amount, it's a more understandable figure for everybody. The percentages were just given as a guideline, and we, along with the other side, locked onto those percentages and then found a way to manipulate those around. But it's important to know that the amount of savings that was needed was provided by this bargaining group, and so I'm appreciative of the way they handled it from the beginning and the way it resulted in getting where we needed to get.
Yes, sir. Mr. George?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to kind of piggyback on what everyone else has said, I agree, appreciate all the work that was gone into this. And the main thing is, this means more cops on the street. And I think everyone up here was getting concerned, and still concerned, with the size of our force because of these times. And by stepping up, that means we get to bring some guys back and put some more guys out on the street. And that's.
And gals.
Yeah. Guys and gals. So certainly appreciative of that, because that's our goal, is to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we can to take care of the citizens out there. So I appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the motion, I got this from the city attorney's office, because one thing that wasn't specifically in the contract, and we ran out of time, was the settlement agreement regarding the reserves. So I do have the motion that we're going to abide by the settlement agreement. And so the motion language is, I move to approve the July 1st, 2011, to June 30th, 2013 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Reno and the Reno Police Protective Association, subject to the understanding that all articles not expressly modified in that agreement, and all other written agreements and contracts between the parties shall retain their existing language in legal effect.
Okay, have a motion, and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now we'll go to item F4. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given, one letter of concern was received from Jeff Church.
Okay. Having no public comment cards, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Renee Brunges, Director of Human Resources, what you have before you is a request to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Reno Police Supervisory Administrative Employees Supervisory Unit Sergeants for the period July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2013. And the title says it's a 2.93% salary decrease. The total equivalent concession is approximately 7.5% equivalent to salary. And you have all of the items on the staff report, that, all of the concession items, the, there's the salary reduction, the Hot August Nights overtime reduced from 2 times hourly pay to 1.5 times hourly pay. Employees are agreeing to pay 50% of the dependent coverage on their health insurance. The field force pay of $40 per pay period per employee has been eliminated. The annual vacation cash out is reduced to 40 hours, and new employees hired on or after July 1, 2011, will have a sick leave cash payout at retirement up to a maximum of 578 hours, which is equivalent to the concession that the RPPA made. And those are permanent changes. The changes that are for the term of the collective bargaining agreement only are the $850 by annual uniform allowance payment, the PERs contribution increase to be split equally between the employee and the employer, compensatory time cash outs will be suspended for the duration of the CBA, and increase the floating, hours of floating holiday per year to 30 hours per year. The total cost of the sergeant's agreement for the two years is $15,238,370. The cost for year one is $7,619,185, and it's the same total cost for year two, $7,619,185.
Mr. Fraz?
Mr. Mayor, same comments. Just want to thank Al and his group for really coming to the table and making these reductions in what they did. And they even went above and gave up some wage concessions as well in addition, so... So I just want to thank them for stepping up and, and taking the decrease.
We appreciate it very much, and thank you very, very much for working with us. Anybody got any other comments?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F5. Madam Secretary, all the notices have been sent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, and one email of concern was received from Jeff Church.
Okay. Having no public comment, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, we got to go through the...
You do?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Renee Runtz, Director of Human Resources, what you have before you is a request to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the RPSAE, the lieutenants' unit. And all of the concessions in this agreement are equivalent to the ones in the sergeant's agreement, so I won't go through all of those again. But the equivalent concession overall is seven and a half percent equivalent to salary. And the total cost for two years for this agreement is $4,925,057. The cost, the cost for each year is $2,462,528. So that's the same cost for year one and year two.
Okay, any questions? Yes.
Move for approval?
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F6. All the, all the notices have been sent. Madam Secretary.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, one email of concern was received from Jeff Church.
Okay. Having no public comment, I'll bring him back to the table for discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Renee Runtz, Director of Human Resources, you have a request to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Reno and the RPSAE Deputy Chiefs Unit. And it is, the concession is equivalent to the seven and a half percent of salary. And the items of concession are the same as in the sergeant's group, so I won't run through each of those again. This agreement, however, is for three years, July 1 of 2010 through June 30th, 2013. The total cost for the three years is $1,754,165. The total cost for the 10-11 contract year is $618,220. The cost for year two is $567,972. And the cost for year three is the $567,972.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on this one, same thing, and the language from the city attorney's office, move to approve the July 1st, 2010 to June 30th, 2013 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Reno and the Reno Police Supervisory Administrative Employees Administrative Unit Deputy Chiefs, and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to the requirements of 2011 Senate Bill 98.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank y'all very much for everything. We appreciate it. Thank y'all. All right, now we'll go to item G, ordinance adoption.
This is ordinance, this is G1, and it's ordinance number 6195, and ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.10, adding a new Article IV entitled Capital Project Surcharge to impose a $2 surcharge on the rental of certain hotel rooms in downtown Reno to pay for the cost of improving and maintaining certain publicly-owned facilities for tourism and entertainment and other matters properly relating thereto.
Do we need, we have a motion and second for discussion? Councilman Frazza?
Yeah, and I didn't see, I'd like, from the city attorneys, where is that in the resolution? Because we brought this back again.
Yeah, there, for the record, John Shipman. And I apologize, there might have been some confusion from the, from the 22nd. At the 22nd, what my understanding was, is we were going to bring back the ordinance as it was, and then have a resolution that would make it a requirement of a two-thirds as a council policy to approve any project that was going to be funded using the $2 surcharge. That's not on your agenda today. I can bring that back on the 24th.
That wasn't my motion. And that's what really, I got to say, I said this last time at the meeting. During the council meeting, that's why we continued it. It wasn't in the ordinance. And that was specifically my motion. I went back, referred to the minutes. I didn't say something about a subcommittee or a side resolution. That was my motion on approving this chapter.
The concern, I think, if, if memory serves, when we were talking at the podium back last time, the concern is if you place a voting requirement in the ordinance, you're potentially affecting a city charter change. And so it, what you can't do is modify the charter, right? And so if you require the two-thirds vote, right now, it's, an ordinance is a vote, is required under the charter by just a straight majority vote of council. So the concern was, from a legal standpoint, that if you were to do that, that would potentially amount to a charter change, which you don't have the authority to do.
You know, Jonathan, why did this come up just now? I, I continued this last week. You guys never said a thing when the motion was being made, and we intentionally continued this to this week, and all of a sudden you're saying this now?
No, and, and I apologize. I think I said it at the time of the meeting, that the, the concept of the problem with a charter change, and I think that was part of...
You didn't say it. I reviewed the tape, Jonathan.
Right, and, and I can stand corrected. But I, and again, I apologize, because that was my impression coming away from that meeting. And then unfortunately, I was on vacation on the 6th, so, and again, I apologize for that, so.
But then that's the question, how does that change the charter? We're not allowed to, to, the vote in the charter says that everything is majority vote?
Yeah, the charter says, when you're passing ordinances, you do it by majority vote. So if you put like a vote requirement into the ordinance, if you were to come back later, you could repeal that ordinance by just a majority vote, because the ordinance allows you to do that.
Couldn't you do the same thing with what you are proposing?
Yes, but the concern is, well, the concern is, here's the concern. The concern is, is that potentially that this is going to be a revenue stream that we're going to bond against. And, and so to keep it clean, the, the concept is to have a resolution, which, again, that'll be your policy, and that'll stand for as long as you want to honor that policy. But it doesn't maybe cast a question over the, of the ordinance, whether or not that's going to, you know, be a, something for bond council to...
How would that have to do with bond council? Because it has nothing to do with the flow of money to pay back bond. It's just what you do with the money.
Right, but let's say, let's say it comes up in the future, and you have a vote, and it's not by two-thirds.
That was the point of the motion.
It, I know, and that, and that becomes, that becomes a legal question about what is the effect of that vote. And if you've got people that say that, no, we did it by majority, and therefore, you know, that should be sufficient, and versus if, if, you know, you have other people that say you didn't do it by the two-thirds, that'll make it difficult for bond council to render a clean legal opinion. But if you were to have it as a...
But that's just on, on what you do with the money, not...
Correct.
You always have to pay back the bond. There's, you can't vote to say, I'm not going to make the bond payment this week.
No, but you're not, you're not going to get a clean legal opinion from bond council saying that there are no problems with this ordinance that's pledging the revenue towards that bond, is the concern. So to keep it clean...
And do we have anything from bond council saying that?
No, we don't. And we, we can, again, if, you, you're not required to do anything today. I mean, this can go back to a first read, we can go do that. The concern was, and again, apologies, was trying to get this in place quickly so that we could start collecting the money as soon as possible, because there are repairs potentially that, so...
We're also trying to get this done, because we're starting negotiations with the bowling congress to come back here, and we'd like to have this in place so that we can go ahead and speak from confidence, instead of saying it may be...
You know, you've got a couple of options. I mean, I could come back, I can do that legal opinion, come back, and then we can provide an amendment if it turns out that it's going to be okay, so that you could pass it today. And then if it turns out that's not going to be an issue for bond council, that's not going to be a city charter issue, then we can come back and amend the ordinance and put that into the ordinance, if you wanted to do that. We could go ahead and do the resolution at the next, at the next, you know, meeting in, in August. So you, you do have options. It's not that you, and, and you don't have to pass it today. Again, you can...
Well, the problem would be that the first reading, we said this had to be in this. This is the second reading, it's not in there. So the case you made, the first reading didn't pass, because it, it wasn't heard twice.
Right, and, and, and again, the impression I came away from that was that pass the ordinance as it was, but come back, Jessica, as you said, with a resolution documenting...
When was that ever said last, at the last meeting? I mean, it really, really wasn't. I mean, it's, it just seems like there's something happening here. Mr. Mayor, here's, here's what we are. We, we, we had a, a motion and a second to approve this agenda item, then the discussion, as Councilman Frazza had requested in the last hearing, whether a two-thirds majority needed to pass this for bonding, and that's where we are right now.
No, that's not the case. The case was, the case was two-thirds on where the money was going to be directed, which should have nothing to do with bond council, as Councilman Iasi pointed out, because we're still paying the bonds. It just takes two-thirds of this body to determine where, where we're going to spend the money. And the, and the case being that, here it's reflected in the minutes, I specifically asked last week in council, where is the city attorney's office? I mean, this is outrageous. It truly is. I, I mean, just to take a councilperson's motion and just ignore it.
No, I, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying ignore the councilperson's motion. I'm saying I misunderstood the councilperson's motion.
But we brought it up again last week, and purposely continued it to this week. So what changed from the city attorney's office from when it was pointed out last week to bring it back this week?
Nothing changed from the city attorney's office in the sense of, again, I thought that issue was put to rest, and that's my fault, and I'm not, and I'm not saying it's not my, I thought that issue was put to rest on the meeting on the 6th. Apparently, it wasn't, and I apologize. And, and so...
How is the, the issue put to rest, Jonathan? How did you understand that from the 6th?
I, from the 6th, I understood that I said that we couldn't put that in the ordinance because that would amount to a charter change, and that we wouldn't recommend doing that. But we could come back with a resolution that would allow you to do...
And when did you say that?
In the meeting.
What meeting?
On the 6th, or the 22nd.
I, I would like the city clerk then to, to pull all the minutes and review the tape. That was never said, never said. I'm sorry, that's just completely false.
And again, this is my memory, so I, I can stand, be stand corrected if I look at that tape. I mean, I don't, I'm not arguing with you, Councilman.
Let's discuss where we want to go from here. Okay, Councilman? Can we move forward and change Section 2.10.470 and put a, make the paragraph there A, and do a B, and say the proceeds of this surcharge must be approved by, the use of the proceeds from this surcharge must be approved by a vote of two-thirds of city council? And if you determine later on that it can't, you said, like you said, we can change this later, but for now, it can be put in, and they can start imposing the tax on the 15th. So we don't have to start over, because that was, is one of the problems.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
So why don't we put it in, and if we can take it out, if there's a problem with it, we'll take it out.
And the concern there is between a first read and a second read, and, and again, I, this is my fault, right? So that, that when you make a material change after you refer to the council...
That's the point of why she made the motion with that in there, is it wouldn't be a material change.
Well, she, it's, she made it, when we had the first reading, she made that part of the motion.
Right. So this wouldn't be a material change.
It's not a change at all from the first read.
Yeah, it's changed not to put it in.
It needs, it needs to go in.
Well, we need, we need to move forward.
Can we, I mean, we're not, we're not, we don't even know if we're bonding on this yet. We don't know, I mean, we're going to start collecting the funds.
Agreed.
If, if you go back and do a legal determination that there's another way we have to do it, we can always amend that out and do it in a resolution or something else.
Agreed.
Before we bond, if that, if it becomes, if that becomes an issue, correct?
Yes, and, and that's definitely one of your options.
But I mean, this would get us, I mean, we can add the language that Dave just said. Where'd you add that, Dave?
Section 2.10.470. Make the existing paragraph paragraph A and add a paragraph B. The use of the proceeds of the surcharge imposed by this article must be approved by Reno City Council by a two-thirds vote.
So we add that in there? That covers, that takes care of her motion from the 22nd.
And what section...
And then if we do have to make changes down the road, we can make changes, but we get it done today, right?
Well, and, and the, the issue there, and I would, the issue becomes, you can make those changes on a first read.
She made them on a first read.
Okay.
Wait, why don't we ask the city attorney?
Wait a minute, let's hold it. It was made on the first reading.
Okay.
Okay, so let's accept that, that there's been a mistake made on this. Now with the thing that Councilman Iasi says, we put that in, because we're not sure we're going to ever bond for anything. If we generate the tax and we're doing certain projects, we could pay for them, and we go. And that's what we're hoping to do. And I don't see where this would hurt us with bond either way or the other.
If it does, we fix it.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The minutes reflect that that was part of the motion in the first reading. So if the minutes accurately reflect that, and, and that is in the adoption, procedurally, I think you guys are okay. However, if there is a bonding issue, or we legally determine that the majority that conflicts with the charter change, we will come back to you.
We can fix it, if we have to.
If we, if we decide to do some bonding, we'll come ask for permission and see how to do it.
And we will check the charter change with, charter issue with bond council, you know, before you return in August.
And, and because nobody's talking about bonding anything right now. So if we can put Councilman Iasi's motion in, there was a motion, wasn't it, Councilman?
We had a motion, that was in addition to the motion.
All right, that's in addition. Guston, run it, please, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I would accept the language that Dave gave in my motion.
Accept, accepts. Under 2.10.470. Correct?
Correct. Okay, any further discussion?
And again, apologies for the confusion. My bad.
All right. I made a mistake once too, so that's okay.
We have a motion, we have a second?
All in favor, say...
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And thanks, everybody, because this is going to help us with negotiation with the bowling congress as we sit down towards the end of the month.
I thought we were, I thought we were advertising Friday. I thought that was...
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's, we just wanted to let you, advise you the effective date. We'll advertise on Friday for this, and so make sure that there's no concern with council with that.
Correct. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're back to H1. We have a 2 o'clock, but it's not quite 2 o'clock yet.
Okay, well, we'll take H1 then.
Resolution number 7615, resolution, approval of resolution directing staff to bring forward on August 24th, 2011 amendments to Title 18, Annexation in Land Development, Chapter 18.16 Signs, Section 18.16.203 Exemptions, to delete the exemptions for flags and real estate signs.
Move to adopt?
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H, whoops, item I1.
This is Bill Number 6758, an ordinance to amend the Reno Municipal Code, Title 12, entitled Public Works and Utilities, Chapter 12.16 Sewer Service, by amending sections 12.16.010 through 12.16.3500, to give other matters properly relating thereto.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, John Flansworth, Director of Public Works, we have a presentation to give. We, we presented this in March with the capital needs that we had. We were direct, received approval for going out to the, to the community. We have performed that. We went out, had a business meeting, we sent out notices. We have not received any comments back in regards to those, to the business impact statement. We did receive a couple of comments in our financial advisory board. We received a comment to perhaps look at a consumption-based sewer rate at some point. We'd recommend at a future time maybe to look at the water usage and tie that in. We also had one of the comments at our neighborhood advisory board as the same. So what we have before you today is an ordinance to change or to increase the sewer user charge... an ordinance to change or to increase the sewer user charges from the 4% that's in place now to an 8%. And also some changes in the ordinance itself on how we do fee calculations for sewer fixture units. Again, I have a presentation to go through if you would like or we can, what's your pleasure?
Let's, no, let's open it up for discussion. Anybody got any discussion, questions or anything? Mr. Iasi.
Yeah, in the staff report, John, it says that, I'm talking about the annexations and people in the, in the Truckee Meadows in Washoe County. Says that the city reimburses Washoe County the user fee at the county user fee rate, which is higher than the current city rate. But we charge the city rate, correct?
We do. That is correct.
So out of the sewer fund, we give Washoe County money. Do you know how much that amounts to every year, what that difference is going to be? Is there?
I'm not sure.
For the, for the amount that you're working in Washoe County isn't.
Well, he's asking, for clarification, your question is on the, when we have a connection fee that's charged.
It says the user fees.
Oh, the user fee.
In the South Truckee Meadows is collected by the city of Reno at the city sewer, city rate. But we give Washoe County-
Their rate.
Their rate, which means we pay more than we're collecting.
That is correct.
Do we know how much that amount is?
1.3 million.
Really?
Yes.
We're subsidizing Washoe County's sewer. There, is there an enterprise fund also?
That is correct.
So we're subsidizing that by 1.3 million dollars a year? And that comes out of our sewer rates?
That does.
So what we're doing here is we're, we're making those people annexed to this, we're going to make them annexed to the city or just charge them the current county rate?
What we're going to do, what, what the ordinance reads right now is that anyone that's annexed from Washoe County into the city will pay the, the same Washoe County rate. So there will not be a subsidy on anyone new coming in. The other thing that this ordinance does is as, through this five-year period of time, we'll be matching Washoe County's rates as we move up 8% each year for five years. We'll be at the same. So that subsidy will become basically null.
Why would we just change our agreement with Washoe County that we're not going to subsidize it anymore?
The, the agreement wasn't necessarily with Washoe County. The agreement, it was a policy decision many years ago that we would charge the Reno rate to those customers within the, in Reno.
But it says by, by agreement between the city of Reno and Washoe County, the city reimburses Washoe County the user fee at the county rate. Is there an agreement between Reno and Washoe County for that 1.8 million?
The, it's not to my knowledge, it's an actual agreement. My knowledge is that it was a decision that we would charge Reno residents the Reno rate. But their point of service at the South Meadows plant requires the payment of the Washoe County rate. And that's what we've been paying.
Oh, okay. So the rest of the Reno taxpayers, we're not subsidizing Washoe County as much as we're subsidizing those people on a different system?
That is correct.
And would this propose that they have to go immediately up to that rate?
No. It just, over the five-year period of time, the rate will increase to where there is no subsidy. What we have in here is that any future annexations that take place within this period of time, they will end up just paying the Washoe County rate for where their point of service is.
And what's that difference in price?
Uh, right now, it's about $9 a month.
$9 a month?
They charge more.
They charge more.
So we're picking, so the rest of us are picking up that $9 a month is what's going on out there now that I see it.
We had this discussion a few months ago. We talked about that, that the rates would eventually be even. But it's what, five years away?
Yes.
Why is it five years away?
Well, our increases are going up at the point to, to make them-
Right.
Those two meet, but.
So right now, the Washoe County rate goes up by the consumer price index each year. Ours is at 4%. We are proposing that it goes to 8% each year over five years. And at the end of five-year period of time, our rates will, will basically match.
What Sparks doing right now?
Sparks is actually a little lower than our current rate, within about a dollar of our current rate per month.
Did they subsidize the county?
I, I can't speak to that. I do not believe that is the case, no. It was, it was just a policy decision that was made at, at one point that when we had a lot of annexations going, especially in the south, that we would pay, that the city of Reno residents would pay the city of Reno rate, even though their point of service was at the South Meadows plant that is operated by Washoe County.
So we're not really subsidizing the county, Mr. Mayor. That's their rate. They charge everyone in the county. So I, I understand that.
Right.
We might want it. So if we, if we said that we wanted that to go up by, in three years, that would save us $5 million instead of five years. We could figure that out.
Each, each year, it's going to, the, the rate is going to get up to there. So it'll be a decreasing amount each year.
And would it be trouble for us in billing to bill people different rates if we said we want that to go up, I'm not saying this, but just tomorrow, they're going to pay the county rate because they moved into the county and-
There'll be some administrative time, but it could be figured out.
Okay. On the grease-
Just clarification. We just wanted to clarify that right now is any new customers coming in from annexation, Washoe County will continue to pay the Washoe County rate, the higher rate.
Right.
But the ones that are currently in Reno that have been paying the lower rate, their rate will increase like everyone else's. And in five years' time, that subsidy will basically go away.
Okay. I'm not sure if I agree with that yet. But now, let me get to the grease trap interceptors. It says we don't want to use the hydro mechanical grease traps proposed. Why not?
We've been having issues with, that they get turned off, that the grease just bypasses and goes right into our system. And we're not getting the separation in those. And so we just have had some issues with those types of, of, that mechanical system as opposed to have, actually having the sand oil separator where they pump it out.
And what's the difference in cost to the business? I'm just curious.
Well, the separation is if they'll have, they'd actually have to have something, they have to have space inside their building to actually locate the hydro mechanical. The difference in cost is whatever the cost of the equipment to locate in their building and the space that it would take up versus putting in a sand oil interceptor outside of the building.
Because I, I've heard just horror stories about grease traps that, and I used to think it was the health department that did it. And then I learned it was the city of Reno requiring huge grease interceptors and traps that make these things out of control for anybody to, to put anything in. And I don't know if this is, so what I say is how much does it cost? Add an extra $50,000 on to the price of a coffee shop or an extra five? What would that do?
It, it's each one site specific. It would depend. But you're probably, you know, for smaller uses, you're looking at the, the lower cost range. For very large facilities, locating something out there, it, it could range, range up in the 30, 40,000 range.
I talked to the owner of the hub, which is like a 200 square foot coffee shop, and his grease trap was $75,000. And that's what we required to put for him.
Not aware, not aware where that cost.
And I don't want to get into specifics, but that's an issue.
Having been in the retail business a while back, the grease trap size requirements have increased greatly. It used to be a 250 gallon. I think the minimum now is 750, right? Yeah. I mean, there, there are places like you're referring to that don't, that would never use a 750 gallon. But I don't know why that requirement's been put in to increase the size of it from 250 to 750. It's just-
I think that's something we should, I don't know whether it's part of this ordinance, but that's certainly something we should look at.
It may be put in 10,000 at the horseshoe club.
And then my last question is, the last bullet point you have is reinspection fees for wastewater discharge permits that we inspect. How much is, does that cost for us to keep going back and inspect these things?
Well, that, we try to tie the fee into what our costs would be. Currently, we'll go out and we may have a violation or something that needs to be repaired. We'll go back out the second time. If it's repaired, that's fine. But sometimes we get, to have to go out a third time even. And that's kind of where we're looking at this charge, is having the ability to impose a fee for those reinspections, for those multiple.
So would, would that be based on a, not a fee for the inspection, but a, a penalty for them having the problem in the first place? That maybe we raise the penalty instead of causing it a fee where you've got to, everybody has to pay upfront to do this. If we find this happening, then there's a, there's a fine?
That could be a possibility.
Is that sort of the same thing?
Well, it's, it's the, it's the, paying for the time of service to go out and do that reinspection. Again, we're not necessarily, not talking about the ones, it's the second time we go back. Or we went out there and inspected. If there was an issue, we have to go back and do a reinspection. That comes out, okay, that's fine. It's one we have to go, repeatedly go back, having the ability to charge a reinspection fee. That is what we're requesting.
But it's not up to the, to the person to see whether we need to do a, a reinspection. We can just say, we need to reinspect. Here's your fee.
Well, it'd be, it'd be because we had some deficiency or something in the system that we had looked at previously and it still had not been-
And we got to go back and make sure that they, so that wouldn't be like a, a fine the first time we saw that?
No. It's not a fine, wouldn't, not necessarily a fine, depending on what the issue is.
Those are all my questions right now, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Mr. President?
Yeah, John, just want to clarify from the staff report. So currently, what is the residential rate on, on the sewer? So we can get an example here.
Currently, in our, we, we did have that in our presentation. Currently, we're at 29.50 right now. And on October 1st, that rate will go up to $30.68 a month. That's what's set right now in ordinance.
Okay. And then?
With our proposal, it would go up an additional $1.18 to $2.36. So we have a $1.18 increase happening October 1. That's in place. We're proposing that, that would double and go to $2.36 beginning October 1st.
Yeah. And, and I guess that's the problem I'm having because we already approved, council did, to adjust those. So it wasn't a big hit at one time when we did the increase on the first go around. But this, this is quite a hit. I mean, because they're going to get, Mr. Mayor, they're going to get the 4% on October 1st, then another 4% on top of that. All of a sudden, wham. And we bill quarterly. So what, what's, what's that bill? What's that reflection going to be? Is it going to be $10 more or?
$10 more.
So it'll be, say, $7 and change difference with what we're proposing. They would have had about a $3.50 or, or 3.70, something like that.
And then my second question is, and John, I called you about this, was I'd got some calls about, I guess it's the fixture fee.
Mm-hmm.
That essentially it was costing more in permits than the fixture itself. Is that being corrected in this proposal?
We are making, we are proposing a change in the fixture unit counts. Currently, we have what's called a private or a public side. We've had some issues come up recently in those. We're proposing not to have that. Our current fixture unit counts were based on, were enacted, put in place in 1980. What we're proposing is to go to the current plumbing code where those fixture units are different. And, and what will happen is individuals who have a private would have been considered private, they may end up paying a little more. Those that were public, considered public, where they had a higher weighting, they may pay a little less. But we are making a change to, to try to clarify and simplify the fixture unit counts and how those are, are given. We're also putting up something in here to credit, to, to actually put it in our code of how we would credit someone if they're going to make a change to their building where they currently have so many fixture units. Maybe they're taking some fixture units out, but they're adding some other ones. It allows them to, to make those credits. Because what we're really interested in is the volume, what's going into the sewer and making sure we have the infrastructure in place to treat, treat that. Not only collect it and take it to the plant, but actually treat it once it gets to the plant.
Okay. So is that two different things? Because they pay the, the sewer connection fee when they build the building. Then if they put fixtures in there, we're charging them per fixture to put in the picture?
For commercial businesses, their, their connection fee is based on the number of fixture units they put in. If they modify that, if they add fixture units, then they will have the, the corresponding connection fee that would go with that.
So then they have the connection fee. Then is there an additional fee for the usage every month?
Then they would just pay the, the standard usage fee that they, they have, yes. And that's based on commercial businesses. That's actually based on the water consumption, no matter what they use.
So in that circumstance, so give me an example what the fee would be if someone's putting in a sink.
Terry, do you have the?
So I've gotten several of these complaints. It's almost as, it's more than the, what they're putting in our fee.
Terry Svetich, Engineering Manager, City of Reno Public Works. And your question pertaining to the fixture unit counts, if they were to put in a sink, the, the example that I actually have in the, is pertaining to if they were to put in a water closet or a toilet, for example. Right now, the city of Reno's fixture unit counts, for a private facility, a toilet would be three weighting units. And for a public, it would be six. So essentially, if we had a, one toilet go in, it would be three. And, or if we put in three, that's part of my example is that if we have nine.
Yeah, well, just give that to me in the fee. What would the fee be then?
All right. On the private side, it would be 2,286.
To put in a toilet?
To put in three toilets. Okay?
Okay, three toilets.
If it was on the public side, right now, as the current fixture unit count is, it would be 4,572. Now, with the change, if we go with the new fixture unit count, the resulting connection fee would be 3,048. So, so basically, it would be lower for a public facility, slightly more for a private facility. So, so if they were putting in three toilets, essentially, it would be about $1,000.
What if they were just putting in one toilet?
A third.
A third of that?
One third of that. One, about 1,000.
Just seems like a lot of money to me. It's more than the, the actual toilet cost just to get a permit.
Well, this is accounting for capacity in the sewer lines as well as sewer capacity at the treatment plant.
You have to look at what that pays for. You have to make sure that your water line, sewer line is big enough for that, you know, and make sure the treatment plant is big enough to handle that extra toilet.
And, and I'd just like to say, we are not proposing to change the connection fees. We are changing the methodology. We are proposing a change there. We have run this through the builders association as well. And, and they, they actually appreciate that it's being simplified. So there's not as much concern out there trying to determine what's private and what's public.
Yes, Mr. Iasi.
One more question that you haven't really addressed yet, but I'm just curious because we had a lady actually come here after a meeting a little while ago. Are we looking forward in the future, in the next five years, to go off, and this is one of the issues when we first started doing metering at Tamwa, to tie that in with the metering for the water comes in and then the wastewater goes out? So that the people with only two people in a house isn't paying the same sewer rate as someone with eight people in a house?
Yes, Councilmember Iasi, we are. I'm, I'm actually proposing a couple of things. I've asked staff to work with Tamwa to determine if we can bill together. So we could have one bill going out to, to at least look at the cost for that, to see if, if that's, if there'd be a cost savings to them and to us for doing that. The other thing I'm, that would help with is right now, we do tie consumption to the businesses. I think that the evolution of our rates is that we'll be coming back to you in the future to look at tying consumption in, as part of that rate as well. And, and that's done in several communities. It's not a new concept. You basically take your three-month average over the winter as your, as your standard use for water. And that's what your rate becomes, your sewer rate for the year. So you don't have the mixture of the irrigation water.
Right, high volume and all that stuff. And so, but when do you think that that might come forward in, in this scenario? Could it be as early as next year?
Those were, those were some of the comments that came in. I think that's something that we'll be looking to go out. It's going to take a fair amount of analysis on that. But that's something we'd be going out, I'd say maybe two years, bring something like that back to you. The billing part makes, may happen sooner. You may see that sooner.
Any further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney. For the record, if you're going to move to refer, I do need to note one amendment that needs to be made. There was just on page 140 of your packet, section 1216420, under number one, where it says, other than pursuant to two, the word and needs to be added. So it reads pursuant to two and three herein. And in that same, on that same page, 140, same section, under number three, new provision, the words or, excuse me, or on or after October 1, 2011 would be deleted because this part of the ordinance is effective upon passage. It's only the rate component that's not effective until October.
Before, before I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to sort of ask the council about this five-year phase in. You know, should we, should we move that up to three years or something like that? Because that seems like, that's, five years is at least another $4 million in subsidy that some people are getting. that some people are getting. Or keep it at the five years? I don't know.
I think we should move it, yes.
I know what you're talking about, because I had raised this issue before. Yes, and remember, we don't annex those people unless they ask to be. So that would be part of the consideration. They ask to be annexed, they should understand what the fees will be. So I would support the three years.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, currently, we just have the rates going up, the 8% for the five years. What you're proposing then is actually those current Reno residents that are being served by the South Meadows Plant, that have the higher rate, that we would actually do their adjustment over a shorter period of time.
That's what I'm contemplating. Because I'm wondering even, maybe when you come back for the second reading for the rates, that might even overall help reduce rates a little bit, because that's quite a bit of money, I think. How much will this raise, the extra $1.2? Dollar 18?
We had enough to do $39 million in capital projects with rates just as they are. We have $120 million immediate, or near-term need. This will take that up to 60 million, so about another 20 million, based on the five-year plan. And then it gives us an additional 20 million every five years, every five-year period thereafter with just what we have proposed.
And I guess for, because I'll make the motion to approve it. One of the reasons that we said is that the cost went up more than we thought, but also it's the street improvement program. While the streets are getting improved, we can't really go fix the streets until we fix the sewer lines underneath. And since we've accelerated the street program, we didn't, at the same time, accelerate the sewer program.
That's correct, and therefore, there were some, particularly in RTC, we had some projects that we weren't able to, we had to ask them to do a different project, even though one was a higher priority, because we didn't have the funds for the sewer.
Right, so a lot of the street repairs going to Sparks and the incorporated area, because we don't have the money to fix the sewers underneath those streets.
Ms. Zadra.
John, if we changed from three to five, or five to three, what would the net effect impact be on those South residents?
Well, again, the net impact would be is they'd end up getting to that Washto County general, that rate, two years sooner, so rather than...
Than a dollar on their budget?
Dollar amount, they would probably be looking at, instead of eight, maybe closer to a 12% increase. So instead of eight, instead of the 8% per year, they'd be looking at more like a 12 or 13% increase.
I just don't think that's acceptable.
Dollars, instead of 2.36, they'd be looking at maybe a three, a $3, a 3 to 3.50, something like that. We can bring that information back to you.
I'd want to see that before we vote on it.
I think you'd look at the percentage.
It would be closer to the 3.50.
So that's a dollar, basically a dollar more?
Dollar plus more, yes.
And if it was extended over the five-year?
It's the same as everybody else. Everybody would be paying the same increase each year. And the difference is that it's the 1.3 million subs, that's being subsidized right now, that's, each year, it's going to decrease. So I'll bring that information back the next time, so you can see both scenarios, how it, what's proposed now versus what it would be if we changed the payback structure, or the subsidy structure.
Ms. Srazza, you want to make a motion?
If I give a motion either way, would that be considered a major amendment, if we do it one way or the other? If we move it back, because we don't have that information today?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I do think that's material, because that's a pretty significant rate change in the amount of money associated with it.
A dollar?
And I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendation the way it is, Mr. Mayor. And maybe next year, we bring this back or something to look at that, because I don't know if the rest of the rate payers are subsidizing that 1.6 million a year, or 1.3 million a year.
I'll make the second to the motion to refer.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion, Ms. President?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm just having a hard time. I think that we have come to the time now where Tamwah, we're on water meters, and I think Councilman Iasi brought up a good point, that we should really be going towards usage. And I do think that that is, it's a hardship. We're already, they're already going to be getting 4% increase October 1st. I think an additional 4% is just hard on people. And then you look at that over a business perspective, but the other part of me says we're getting a lot cheaper rates now, as we're building the sewer system. I just would like to see more information. I would like, we have a new finance director coming on board at the end of the month. I would like for him to have the chance to review these rates before we do it. But I do believe we should be going, getting to the point where we're doing it based on usage. It's truly a fairness issue. We do it with the water system, so do I think it's needed as far as fixing the sewer? I do. I mean, there's no question about it. I would just like to see a different formula brought before us and have the new finance director have the opportunity to review this, because it is a big jump.
Personally, I favor going to the three-year, even though it's a, it's a, I mean, if you talk percentages, it sounds humongous, but if you talk dollars, it's a different animal. But I will support it. But I was wondering, if we postpone this until August for approval, until our August meeting or September meeting, would that hurt anything? Because I think we should look at this. I mean, we're subsidizing other people and stuff, and I think we should look at...
We would have to then bring the first reading back to you then, August, so we would renotice for that.
Not if we continue, we wouldn't have to renotice, right?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This isn't a public hearing, so it really doesn't matter on the notice. It's just publication of an agenda. But if you do want to look at both alternatives, we could do a first introduction, as long as the timing is okay with the department and other matters.
On, just to speak quickly, on the consumption analysis, I agree. Councilmember Srazza, I think that is the evolution where we need to go. The amount of analysis that needs to take place with that is pretty substantial, would take months, actually, to get through that. Then we'd have to, we'd end up going back and, so I want to bring back, maybe when we come back, a timeline of what that would take to make that happen.
Yeah, and I guess, John, the other timeline that you should put in there is that we have, I mean, according to the staff report, and you mentioned it, we have enough right now to do the 40 million with the current structure that we have in place. So can't we just use the money that's available, and over the next two years, come up with a formula for usage?
The problem with that is going to be that any more delay is only going to increase the amount of whatever rate increases are going to happen later. That's what my concern is.
But I guess for me, philosophically, is if you're going to impose the rate, and if we're going to, I mean, we're looking, according to the staff report, a five-year rate, shouldn't the rate be fair?
Yeah, and I believe, I believe that that's what the analysis that we've done. That we had a couple of different options that we brought forward. One was actually to go straight to, say, the Washto County rate, almost a 30% increase one time, and then go by Consumer Price Index increases every year thereafter. I felt that was too much to ask at this time, although that more closely met what our capital needs are. And it really, it all comes back to what our capital needs are looking at, and what our needs are there.
When you talk percentages, you scare the Jesus out of us. What are the dollars you're talking about to an individual? Is it a dollar, is it 50 cents, or is it $5?
Okay, apologize for that.
No, I mean, every time I hear a percentage, I cringe, but when I look at the dollar amount...
Around a 30% increase, you'd be looking at about a $9 increase per month.
I don't do that. But what if we do a three-year, what if we do a three-year deal?
If we go three years instead of the five that we're proposing for everyone, then you're looking at probably something closer to a $3.50 per month increase. And we're proposing right now about a $2.36 increase over the five years.
Ms. Srazza gave us a motion. We have a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote, 5-1.
Mr. Mayor, I might want to refine that motion and say that we don't repair streets in Ward 4. I mean, Ward 3. And that's what's happening, is it has to be done, and you get to ride on the fact that it's going to get done, and you get to vote no. But you get all the benefits of it having done.
But that's not true, Councilman Iasi.
That is absolutely true.
I voted for the increase in the first place, and when staff proposed that increase to us years ago, they said that was going to be enough to meet the needs. So if we want to go into that debate, we can.
Yeah, and then inflation went up.
But then, when they presented it, they said that increase would satisfy, satisfied the needs of our sewer system. And if you want to get in that debate today, we've used the sewer system to buy a bus station for redevelopment for baseball.
I'm sorry, you have the two things incorrect.
Let's go.
That's connection fees. That's included in this.
Mr. Gus.
Got a headline bout coming up, I think, a little bit later on. I'd suggest that we have a time certain at 2 o'clock for E1.
Well, let's take the vote first before you...
We did vote.
We did.
We did vote, I didn't vote.
Welcome back.
Okay, thank you.
5-1, you said.
I did say 5-1. You guys move so quick for me, I'm too old to keep up with you. All right, we do have, so you want to move the agenda along, let these people, you don't want to let them sit through some of this? They'd have a lot of fun, it'd be very educational for them. Let's go to the time certain at 2 o'clock.
Are you going to make the E1 presentation, Mr. Mayor?
No, we're not going to do that until after.
Well, that says, it says on your list of council agenda, E2. E1 will be at 2 o'clock.
E2 would be done after their races. E1 will be done after the time certain. Did you read the word "after"?
All right. We'll be the semi-main event. We can be the semi-main event.
Well, I mentioned it earlier this morning, that it would be done after, that Adam E1 would be done after the time certain. All right. We have people that wish to speak this morning or this afternoon on Adam... What is that?
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, we should. All right. This is joint meeting of the Reno City Council, the Downtown Alcohol Advisory Committee. Do you have a roll call over there?
Guston?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Srazza?
Here.
Dorch? Yasi?
Here.
Hasjeff? Absent. Keshel?
Here.
For the DAC? Ross?
Here.
Clifton?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Maylov?
Here.
McGee? Absent. Shapiro?
Here.
Silverman?
Here.
Wilson? Absent.
Okay. We'll now call the meeting to order. Shannon Dobbs?
Good afternoon, Council. Shannon Dobbs with Five Star Saloon Downtown. I want to say, first of all, I want to thank the City Council for extending the invitation for privileged license holders to join in the discussion with the Downtown Alcohol Awareness Committee. Several of us license holders have taken advantage of that, and we did join in the discussion. And I think that our communication has clarified and gone a long way towards getting this thing together to be able to present to you today, so I do appreciate that opportunity. There's a couple of things that, very small issues, that I still have with what has come out of the board. Specifically, there was a couple of issues with inside and outside the business with security, thousands of dollars' worth of cameras, extra security to patrol outside. I think that comes perhaps under, more under the guidance of an opinion, or something that maybe should be presented to specific businesses, but not across the board, to every business that has a privileged license. Some of them just don't apply to this type of thing. But as long as this is coming out as a recommendation from the city and not as a force of law, I don't really have that much of an issue with it. I do have an issue with, we, I and several other business owners attempted to bring up suggestions of our own and some things that we could do to get involved, and other suggestions that were outside the scope of this brochure that's being presented. And we were told by the Downtown, the DAAC, that that was outside of their scope, that they were not willing to consider anything that did not have to do with this brochure. So since council was making a request to us to come up with ideas, and not necessarily always coming up in the position of opposition, I do hope that at some point in the future, we can be given the opportunity to get involved with this discussion, bring our ideas to the table, and hopefully have a more convivial discussion about ways to benefit and ways to make the situation in the downtown area a lot better than it is right now.
What are your, some of your suggestions?
Well, one of the suggestions that I had was to get the homeowners associations and the people, or the building owners of the residencies in the downtown area together, and bring them into discussion, and have some type of requirement or suggestion or recommendation that they, that they educate their residencies
Okay.
as to, as to what type of residence they're moving into. And they're, we've kind of gone back and forth a couple of times, and there seems to be an impression by a lot of people living downtown that they're living out in the sticks, that they're living in the suburbs, and they should be granted the same benefits as if they're living in a cul-de-sac out 20 miles away.
Any other suggestions besides that one?
Sure, that there should be some recommendation to the building owners that they modernize their facilities to provide the same protection to their residencies of noise, sound issues, so that it's not all going to be on a business owner, that, hey, you know, there's some requirement to protect your residencies. If you've got people living in your building, then there should be some requirement to provide some type of protection, so that they're not exposed to the elements.
All right.
And, you know, we went through several other potentials.
Okay, well, write them down, get them to us, we'll look at them.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dell Hardy?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name's Dell Hardy, I'm an attorney here in town. I represent Lorton Enterprises, also the Tonic Lounge here today, and the Q and Cushion. I also participated in some of the comments in one of the meetings, and gave some suggestions. And some of my concerns about this as a lawyer is that you can't force people to go outside their place and police the outside. You can't send security people outside to do it. There's not going to be any insurance coverage for it, it's never going to work. It's just going to fail. And because of that, much of this stuff doesn't work. If you're going to require cameras, make it the law. If you're going to require a special type of lighting, make it the law. This is an awful slippery slope. So what happens is that, right now, I've done three of these cases so far, upstairs on the third floor, on citations. And we go to administrative hearing officer, and then what happens is that Mr. Skaw and I have conversations about what he's going to require as additional requirements. Well, that's what they're going to do, they're going to start putting that on us. If you guys want to pass a law, do it, but there's plenty of laws on the books right now, just enforce them. And instead of sending us upstairs to administrative hearing, cite these bar owners when they do a violation. Cite them at the time. Don't wait and say, I've gone up, and it's been a year and a half of written-down violations, not one citation. Not one citation. So if you're going to fix it, fix it by telling the police, give them the citations at the time. They get two or three of them, they go upstairs and have an administrative hearing, and then it takes place. But this right here is a very slippery slope.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Why don't the security officers in these bars arrest the people instead of throwing them out on the street?
Well, much like the police sometimes say that the matter's been resolved, you know, if they can get the two people together and say the matter's been resolved, they do. What happens is, is that if you start having security officers, and this is some of the security training, you have security officers start grabbing people, putting them in handcuffs, you're going to get false arrest claims. There's going to be problems about, I wasn't doing it, this guy hit me, and now I'm getting arrested too? And so that's some of the problems that you've got, and you don't want, and, you know, sometimes things can happen.
I just wondered, for 20 years at Boomtown, if my security had a problem, we placed them under arrest, we handcuffed them, put them in the back, our insurance covered us, we were always legal. The law enforcement, when they showed up, they could release them if they wanted to or whatever, but other than that, you booked them under charges.
Yeah, and I'm sure sometimes there was incidences where you didn't hear about it, but your security basically said, okay, if you guys just both get away from each other, you leave out of that door, you leave out of that door.
Once we call the police, they'd never let them go.
Well, I agree with that. But I don't think, I don't, I do not, Mr. Mayor, I don't know of one occasion where they called the police and let the people go.
Okay.
At the barhouse, not one. Thank you.
I just hate to see them thrown out on the street, that's all, and I'm not going to debate it today. to debate it today.
Yeah, okay.
Eddie Lorton.
How you doing today, Eddie Lorton, for the record, Mr. Mayor, City Council? Well, part of that problem, to answer your question, Bob, where before, you know, because I agree in being cooperative too with police, fire, everybody, I ran my business right. Most of these people do, there's one or two that have a problem and now we're all dragged in. And the problem is, is, uh, like Mr. Rula, we had this conversation during these committee meetings, and part of the problem's this, uh, call of service formula, it's all messed up, there could be a business close, they get 180 calls in a month, we already know about the cars, calls of service formula. But then by the same token, they try to use these against you in these hearings Dale's talking about on calls of service and stuff like that. So then, we had a little conversation and he had stated that, okay, coming up, they won't use calls of service against you because if we want to arrest someone for trespassing, if they're unruly, so we help the city, we help the situation, then you arrest them and then we have them come, and then later, you got people like Meister turning around, he's the other guy in charge of the business license portion of the police, and then he's trying to bring all these false accusations against you using calls of service when you're just trying to help the situation. So there's no communication with the police, really. So you got one telling you one thing, the other one telling you the other, then they bring you to these hearings, and most of them are, we learned two things from this thing, the bars aren't going to close early, this is a 24-hour town, and there's no separation between bar and casino. The other thing is the fact that, um, you know, they don't have dram shop laws. So now, here he pulls most of these people into these hearings he's been dealing with, and, oh, most of them are instances happening down the block, once they've been to a venue, this is a tourist state. Casinos aren't responsible for that, nobody is, so unless they change state law, they're just blowing smoke again. So they'll bring you to these hearings off 100 different charges because someone had a beer here, but down the street, they shot somebody, people need to be accountable for this stuff, not keep the business, the business, the business. Nobody wants that, nobody wants fights, they need to maybe put someone in jail for 15 days, charge them 15 or 10,000 or 3,000, whatever you come up with, if they're fighting in the street, and they'll quit that. But you can't blame the businesses when we need jobs because businesses supply jobs, supplies revenue streams, and we need to be business friendly. And so if they can come together at the police department, because we have to work together on this, instead of them telling us one thing and doing another, then we can work cooperatively. And I'm against all of this and this, okay, when Nevada Energy purchased here Pacific, we don't get a brochure, and that's a way more dangerous business on how to operate your business. When they open the CN, they don't give you a brochure on how to operate your business, way more complex situation. And then here we are, bar owners, they're basically saying the bar owners are stupid, so we need a brochure so people don't urinate outside, and the different stuff they put in there and, and things that aren't even law they have in there that they suggest. I think this is a waste of taxpayers' dollars, we don't at this point in time, we're laying off firefighters and police and lowering pays, waste more money on a useless brochure. Uh, Mr. Iasi already mentioned the fact that there's enough laws on the books, now we need to enforce them, so now they've stepped up some of their sting operations and they're doing that. That's what I applaud and we need for the bad actors in the group, like Mr. Guston said. So, to waste more money on things we don't need, I don't agree with. You move next to the railroad track, you're going to get a train, these people moved into the middle of this town, they get what they get.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Bordicott.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, my name's Jim Bordicott, I'm, uh, representing Plaza Resort Club, a downtown hotel and timeshare operation. And, um, we're in support of what the, uh, motion is today. We do provide some of the customers to the customer base, to the bars, uh, that are, uh, essentially the issue of today's discussion. Uh, but we, but we and our guests do suffer from some of the bad behavior of some, and I say some, some of the inebriated customers of these same businesses. That kind of problem relates to damage to property, unruly behavior in the neighborhood of our property. And it is our hope that this guide would simply help to raise the tone of the downtown, particularly in the hour, early hours of the morning. And listening to some of the, uh, opposition prior to me here, uh, maybe it might be a good idea, and they may have it, I don't know, if the bars were to form their own trade association to police their own peers. Um, you know, they have some good ideas and they have some recommendations, and, um, maybe they can call to task those bar owners that just don't seem to care. Um, I realize that this is a guide, and the compliance does not appear in any way to be a condition of the continuing business license. And so it is a voluntary effort that's being expected. I realize also that it may place burdens, uh, serious burdens on some of these businesses, particularly the smaller businesses. But we would hope, certainly, uh, in, in our neighborhood, that all of the businesses involved would make a serious effort to voluntarily follow the guidelines, or at least those that they can cooperate with, uh, that are being provided. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Georgette Marcella. She's in favor. Marilyn Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to see you. For the record, my name is Trey Abney with the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. About a year, year and a half ago, I was, I had the pleasure to serve as the vice chair of the Business License Task Force, uh, when we worked to streamline the business license process here in the city. And these issues came up in that group, and it was the chamber and, and some others that suggested forming a task force such as this for the downtown alcohol issues. And so we, we're very pleased about this process and, and the way it was able to move forward. We, we, we want to thank, uh, uh, Roberta Ross for her work and, and the rest of the members of the, of the task force and, and the fact that we can have cooperation and discussion, uh, with the business owners that, that this would, uh, really affect and, and that they were able to give their input. I think that we're pleased that most of these are suggestions to be able to help small business owners and not, uh, requirements. Uh, if, if these were made into requirements, I think it would be pretty onerous on some of your smallest businesses. But it's good to have everything in one place, it's good to have a list of current laws that are already on the book, that they, books that they must follow, everything in one place, in one easy-to-read brochure, um, you know, that they can, they can follow and, and seek guidance, you know. I, I think the city should always be willing to reach out a helping hand, you know, to business owners and, and help them be successful. And I think, I think part of this, uh, can do that. Always worried about painting every, every business in one type of industry with a broad brush, and so we want to be careful not to do that and make sure we know that they're responsible. Uh, most bar owners are responsible. And we want, uh, these type of businesses here, you want young professionals here, you want people to come downtown, and so we need a wide mix of these type of businesses. And then I think, you know, finally, at the end of the day, you know, you've heard comments about what's the responsibility of the business owner, and I think we all have a responsibility when we live in society to take care of these things. But at the end of the day, the actions of a drunken moron are just that, and they're his fault. And so we need to make sure that if somebody does something in an establishment, walks outside, walks down the block and, and punches somebody, or whatever they're going to do, that they're held, held responsible, and it's not necessarily, uh, the business owner's fault for selling that person at some point, uh, during that day, a legal product. So we just need to keep in mind the individual responsibility aspect of this. So, that is all I have, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, I have no other public comment cards, I'm going to close that now and we'll go to discussion. Ms. Ross.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As per your request on April 6th, we are bringing back forward to you, um, a new guideline with stakeholders, um, that we reviewed and discussed their objections and their proposed recommendations. We did go through that. We have, um, had the three DAC meetings afterwards, and we had the one workshop where they were all involved. The discussion was informative, lively, creative, and did bring forward the guide and recommendations that you do have in your hands. There's your separate sheet on the recommendations, and then there is your guide. The last time that I was in front of you, I started going through that on a point-by-point basis, and I learned real quickly, you all had read it and understood it. This time, I'll say to you, you have it, if you have any questions, please, please ask me those questions. Chief Pitts, staff report that he brought forward to you is, I believe, all-inclusive of, uh, summary of what happened, um, at our, at our meetings and our conclusions. At this time, I would ask that if you have any other further questions, or if you have any questions or comments that myself, my vice chairman, Darrell Clifton, or any others of the committee can answer questions for you.
Well, we appreciate the committee working together with everybody. I'm disappointed that some of the people didn't participate in it because they didn't get what they wanted, but I do thank y'all very much, uh, for working on it, these are great suggestions, and we can look at them and go forward. But, any council members have any questions right now? Mr. Guston.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, first of all, again, I told the, the committee once before, but I reiterate, thank you for the time and effort you spent for the, the business owners, the same thing. It's not perfect, but I think we're closer than we were a year ago, or 15 months ago. Uh, maybe, everything isn't bought off on, but there's a, there, we're, we're taking that, that one giant step forward, half step backward towards communicating to one another what can happen. There, there's one side that wants it a little more stringent than the other, I understand that. Um, I think we're, we're still far away from where we need to be. Um, the, the incidents that happened in town, recently one happened, I talked to the chief about it, about a shooting outside of an establishment, and the chief told me, the people in the establishment did everything that we told them to do. They followed it by the book and it still didn't go right. So, you can make the best-laid plans, but sometimes they don't result in the best overall, uh, uh, the best event when it's, when it's settled. So, I, again, I thank you for doing that, we're not there yet, we still need to keep going. I, I think there's some, I was asked the other day what's happening in town, and, uh, I don't want to go downtown, it's not safe, et cetera, et cetera. I, I thought, I truly believe in my heart, there's some aberrations this year that we haven't had in the past, uh, in terms of violent incidents that have happened, but I think we're working towards that, and I know, having discussed with the police department, with the deputy chiefs, uh, they're restructuring what they're doing. As Mr. Abney said, you know, you, you can't control a moron, I, I understand that, but we need to keep working towards the results that we want. I remember Mr. Iasi saying, when this first started a long time ago, that downtown was changing because it's an urban environment. And I understand that's kind of the comment that Shannon made about understanding where you're living. And, and, and that certainly is part of it, but where do you cross the line, where do you draw the line, how do people get over that line, how do we get them back on the right side of the line? So, I, I just have general comments about this. It's not perfect, but thank you for doing it, because we're, I, I truly believe we're farther ahead now than we were when we started 15, 16 months ago, whatever that period of time was. I, I don't know the answer, I don't know if it's rigid enforcement, or education to the community, or, or how this goes about, because people do get intoxicated, or they do imbibe and enjoy themselves, and then they lose some of their inhibitions. And it's very difficult to control everybody, but we have to get to that because we're continuing to have circumstances that we don't want to have in our downtown. I hope this guideline benefits everybody in the long run. Uh, we need to work closer together, as I keep saying about that, but, but thank you for doing it, thank you for taking that step, there's still a lot more steps to be made.
Mayor, is it all right if I ask?
You sure can.
Sure.
Is that when you say it's not perfect in your closing sentence, though you do believe that this is a step in the right direction, that this, these recommendations in this guideline is something that you agree with going forward with?
I, I agree that it's a step in the right direction, I, I think it's even confirmed in public comment about people who, who may have had some objection when this first started, said, you know, I, I don't exactly agree this, the way this is, but I've got some other suggestions I want to make, bring those together. So, yeah, I, I definitely think we're headed in the right direction, I'm not giving total endorsement, but I, but where would we be without this? That, that's the point. So, it, it's, everybody, you have to, you know, the longest journey starts with the first step, and, and we've taken more than one step, so we're headed that way.
That's what I was hoping, it's a journey, and this is a step. It's a recommendation, we were very clear that we went through and put in the word should, 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 we tried to be as consistent as we could on that word. And we also have, um, the CSAS, um, team is they, you guys, I'm sure have seen, all seen the letter that they're going forward with this, and it's a fire and the police department going and building codes, going forward and going to establishments and checking them out. And a guideline like this for the bar owners for them to be able to handle, be handed out at, uh, business licensing at the time is great, I mean, it's a fabulous tool, tool for the bars to have. Thank you, Councilman Guston.
Ms. Zadra.
I absolutely agree, um, thank you. It, it's been a long, um, and, and kind of arguous, I'm sure, adventure for you. We appreciate the, the thought that, that you've put into it and that the time and dedication. And I did recognize clearly that these are recommendations. So, we need to, we need to balance free enterprise and people's ability to run a business in a way that, that, um, their model is reflective of. But we also need to respect our priority to become a, um, to re-urbanize and become a walkable, kind of a downtown area. So my question, and I'm not sure if it's necessarily to you, Roberta, and the committee, but probably more to code enforcement and, um, our, our police operations, what is the next step? Where do we go from here? Do we kind of look at something similar to the crime-free, multi-housing type of operation, where we had some voluntary kinds of activities, recommended activities, and then we actually moved forward with, um, a first tier of, you must participate at this level if you're a business of X size or larger? I don't know, what is the next step? Where do we go from here?
Well, and I think that's one of the things that we'll be looking at as a council, you might have an answer right now.
Lieutenant Bill Rula, for the record, uh, as we mentioned, this is a first step, I mean, this is a, a multi-phase problem, and, and, uh, doing our research, there was a publication from the cops department, and this is probably 1998, 99, it's called Assaults In and Around Bars. So this isn't a, a new problem, it's something we've been dealing with for the last 10 years. I think CSAS is, is a direction that, problem-solving direction team that we utilize, partnerships with the businesses, uh, someone mentioned a trade association concept. Um, I know the, uh, Jackson Food people would come in and talk to us, uh, they are looking at a kind of a retail association with the city. So there's different options that we can look at our, look, look towards. Um, we are currently, right now, working more on the enforcement side, uh, we obviously heard about enforcing laws we already have on the books.
Right.
Uh, not only from the police side, but as well as the code side, so it is multifaceted. I, I don't think there's a quick and easy answer to this problem, it's been around for, um, you know, as long as I've been here, and dealing with the downtown issues, so.
Joe Henry, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. Part of the CSAS team is, is a new concept, and it's evolving. So I think your question, what's next, is we'll continue to have the CSAS team evolve and, and to find out where we can make changes, where changes are needed. And I think that's the first step we have to take, is continue to go out and, and experience this summer season, which will be our first season with entire, um, entertainment season outside, and I think that's where we're going to regroup in the wintertime and, and see where we need to change and where we need to go forward on.
Mr. Guston.
I think, uh, Mr. Rula, I think also in talking with the chief, you, you've changed the structure of your teams downtown and times and, uh, put a more emphasis in certain areas and times of the day where the, uh, the problem is the most severe.
Yes, uh, this last couple of weeks and probably carrying into the rest of the summer season, we've assigned a special task force team to deal with the behavioral issues that we see of, of the, the, the people that end up being our suspects in these crimes. But again, that's just, and it's, it's been effective in the last couple of weeks, we've seen the numbers increase where we've, we've probably arrested those folks that probably were going to cause problems before they got started, two, three, four o'clock in the morning. Um, but that, again, is just one facet. Uh, you're dealing with the behavior of the people downtown, uh, we need the partnership with the businesses downtown to work with us, uh, the code compliance, the fire side, council members, uh, again, I think it's a multifaceted, we have changed our tactics, but again, that's more on the enforcement side of it.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Mayor and other council members, that, the enforcement's part of it, and it's, it's one of the, the elements, as the deputy chief said, but I, I'm perplexed when somebody pulls out a firearm and, and actually fires at somebody and hits him and is out of jail less than 24 hours later. I, I don't understand that.
No, I don't either. And I, you know, I agree with Mr. Abney, you can't worry about the moron going down the street and punching somebody, but also should the bar let that moron out on the street before? So I hold the responsibility, and I listened to one property owner here that's been up So, I hold the responsibility, and I listened to one property owner here that's been up here crowing for the last three or four months, but he's also had drug problems in his tenants and his leasing business. So, I think he needs to have a talk with his people, and they have to have some things done. And if we don't, then we have to step in and put in some rules. But if you people that own bars will work your people and do the things, these are guidelines. These are not rules. These are not anything anybody's doing with. But you can't keep letting people leave your bar and running them out, having your security throw them out on the street, and don't expect any responsibility when you sat and sold them all the liquor. If not, then I'll propose that we close them at two o'clock in the morning, and let it go to court and see where it goes. I don't care. But I'm tired of the bartenders or the bars doing the stuff that they're doing, letting people get drunk. The bartender sees they're drunk, instead of having security retain them or do something, they're saying, you're going to have to leave now. Get out of here. And I know, because I hired a private investigator that's been downtown the last three months, looking at it personally. And I know that in one of the property owners, they're doing drugs, and it's a drug haven. I know there's another area by the ballpark that's a drug haven. And we've got to stop that, if we're going to do something in downtown, and we need to work together. And if we're not going to do it, then we got to pass ordinances and change the rules, and say, here what it's going to be. And if anybody doesn't like it, hell, the court's been there for, I've been here 46 years, and it hadn't moved an inch, so they can all line up and go. But we got to have help, and we got to work together. I don't want to restrain business. I've been in private enterprise for the last 40, 50 years. But we don't turn the morons out on the street when we know they're already drunk. And if we have a lessee that we know is tolerating drugs to be sold, we don't need that lessee. You need to find another one, or you need to tune them up, and you're not doing it. And I'm disappointed. You come in here and beg and everything else, but then some of you don't step up to the plate and do it. So, it just irritates the Jesus out of me. You can talk about private enterprise and all this stuff. Nobody's been more involved in it than I have in the last 40, 50 years. But you have to have responsibility. My people used to, at Boomtown, let them go when they came. Then they picked them up in a wreck, or killed somebody, or did something, or they let them go before the police got there. You can arrest somebody on trespassing, you can ask them to do things, and there are laws that can protect you as a property owner. Don't give me this garbage you can't, because it is. 20 years I owned that business, I never had one lawsuit, but I arrested a lot of people. Sometimes a police officer. We didn't have many deputy sheriffs in those days. So, if they thought they were straightened up and let them go, they could do it. Other than that, I filed every charge I could against them, and that's what you, as property owners, need to do. If you don't, you're neglecting your responsibility, and you're absolutely correct. If somebody's house doesn't have soundproof windows, they ought to put them in. They're moving in a downtown court. But we don't have to have people urinate in our streets, because nobody's going to come downtown. There won't be any businesses downtown. And in this economy, it's hurting us. You think it's fun to pick up the newspaper when you're in Dallas, Texas, and hear about three shootings in Reno, Nevada? You want to crawl. You're down hoping that they're going to bring 80,000 to 100,000 people to the National Bowling Stadium a year? And yet, they pick up the paper, and they say, Jesus, is Reno safe? I've read the paper, and you've had five or six shootings in the last 30 days. But I blame that on property owners. I blame it on the people that are not taking charge. And if we have to change zonings or ordinances, then we have to do it. I rest mine. Take over, Mr. Guston. Ms. Frazza.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you had brought up, quite some time ago, about the liquor, and we had had Chief Pullman at the time had talked about, I think, one of the issues here, it's good guidelines. I'm not sure this goes far enough. I mean, really, we go through this extensive process for someone to get a gaming license in this state, but yet, to open liquor stores, or to open a bar, it's really very easy to do. And I think Chief Pullman had come forward before, talking about how other jurisdictions, and I think, Alex, you had given us a presentation too, to me, that's the root of the problem, because it is a privileged license. It's a privilege to have a liquor license. And I look at all the things we do for gaming that they have to go through to get that gaming license, but there's nothing for a liquor license. And I think that's where we need to go in our code, is looking at, you know, who is entitled to really receive these licenses? And what's going on? I mean, they're popping up all over. We've had moratoriums in the liquor stores. We've had, you know, we have more and more requests now in their zones, where they're just popping up all over the place. And so, I think that's something that we need to look at in our code, is how easy it is to get one of these licenses, because you're serving alcohol, and I think there's got to be some kind of responsibility there in order to get that license. And right now, I think all they do, it's $2,000 fee, they, you know, get their fingerprints, as long as they're checked, and maybe Lieutenant, you can help me on that, as long as they pass the background check, they can just open. Other communities are much more stringent on what they require to get a liquor license in the first place. So, I just think we need to look at those best practices, and see where they've worked in other communities.
Councilwoman Ayazi.
Maybe this is for Craig, on this pamphlet. Which ones of these, because I'm just a little concerned with the shoulds and the mayes, and the, because some of these looks like they're actual laws.
Craig Scott, Deputy City Attorney. Yes, the pamphlet includes should, where it's a recommendation. It does use mandatory language, where there is actually an ordinance, and we've tried to include the ordinance with those sections, so that there is a difference there.
And that's what I mean, when I look at this, when I look at the intended user, I wouldn't be able to tell, like, on entry and exit number four, it says, the licensee should refuse to admit anyone appearing intoxicated, and then it gives a code after that. So, does that mean they must refuse?
I don't believe it does. That would not be correct, and I'm not sure which section we're talking about.
That's what I mean, it just seems inconsistent to me.
There is a reference to a code, so that people can go look at what the should is based on, and it's basically, if I'm thinking of the right one, it's one that a licensee is required to use safe practices, I'm paraphrasing here, but safe practices. And that's sort of a nebulous, so there couldn't be a must associated with that one.
Then, I guess maybe it should say, please refer to, or something, because it looks, when I read it, it looks like that is what the code says. That's, I'm just saying, from someone who, I just picked it up to read it, and I'm trying to operate a bar, open a bar, it confuses me a little bit about what that means. I know I've got to ask a lot of questions and all that. And then also, is this for people who are supposed to, just coming in to get a new license, or for people who already have a license?
Alex Woodley, for the record, Code Enforcement Manager. Yes, sir. The intent is to provide this, as the CSAS team goes out and makes contact with these businesses, we're going to provide them with their own pamphlets, and also for those new applicants that come in. Our intent is to make sure that every business downtown has one or two of these pamphlets.
Because I see the difference between someone coming in, because I've heard a lot of people getting fined a lot, and confused about what type of license they actually need. Do I need a beer and wine? Do I need a cabaret? Do I need a DJ? And maybe that could be explained on some of this other sheet here somewhere. I know there's a lot here. But that, a lot of people, they just get, they're not misled, but they haven't done all their homework. They think, well, I'm just going to have a bar, and I'll have a guy playing a jukebox over there. Oh, now you need another license. And I thought we were actually going to look at some of those licensing also, to see if we, we're going to reduce some of those licenses that we require. But I think that should be added in. And the other thing, on the legal part of this, I guess the whole, I like the pamphlet. I like the way it talks about what you should and could do, because last time, I got the impression that this was going to go in code. So, that's a huge difference between what came before and what's coming now. These are things like, if you really want to be a good neighbor, you'll do some of these things. It doesn't require anything. Like Mr. Hardy was saying, that they don't want to send anyone outside, but we also require people to put stanchions out if they're going to have a line. Well, you got to send somebody outside to do that. So, the alternative is, then, we won't let you have lines anymore, if you don't sort of control it a little bit, because people have to be able to walk down the sidewalks. So, this, to me, looks like a very good way to get it in the middle. But I think it's a start, because what it didn't get to, I guess I'm on this track today, I'm going to disagree with Councilwoman Sfrazza, I don't think it's how easy it is to get a license, it's how hard it is to take it away. Anybody should be able to get one. It shouldn't be hard as a barrier to get into it, but if you start screwing up, it should be easier for us to take it away. And I think that the next thing that we've got to look at is, and I thought we were going to, is the escalating fines. You know, if you get this many fines, then you're going to have to close at two o'clock, and then 11 o'clock, and have that escalation in there built into our code. But from the face of it, and I heard all the public comment, and I agree with you, but these aren't, are just guidelines. They're not anything that we're putting into code. But that's part of it, I think, is we've got to look at escalating these fines and taking away licenses from people who abuse that license.
Yes, sir, I agree with you. If you remember, the attachment to the staff report, recommendation number five, makes reference to a pursuing legislative change that will allow us to acquire higher fines, because as you know right now, fines go up to $1,000. And we think with businesses, we probably, it would be more effective to not just start at $100. I mean, if a business is making $5,000 a night, we'd like to maybe start off with a $500 citation and move up. So, that is, that is.
But we don't have to go to get state legislation to look at their closing times, do we?
No, sir.
So, we could just say, okay, you have a 24-hour license, but if you're fined so many times, you're going to close at two o'clock. You get three more fines in the next, then you're going to close at midnight. That cuts into their money, too.
Yes, sir. And we are looking at all sorts of different tools, so to speak, because that's what we consider this as a tool. Going back to your reference on number four, you are correct. It does, it's a little misleading. There's a two-part sentence here, and that section of the code does pertain to the second half of the sentence, which is possession of alcohol outside and exterior, so we'll clarify that. The one point that is the law is, as you'll notice, number one, on entry-exit, what we used was the word must, in italic font as well, to differentiate it from the should. So, we did use the wording must, but you're right, we will make that change.
Or maybe everything that is in code has to be, you put it in bold or something?
I agree.
Something, because I don't think it's misleading, it's confusing.
It is. It is.
A whole different thing.
That's good. That's good you pointed that out, because we'll change that.
And that might not be, that was just the one example I used, so if we go through that a little bit. Because the one thing I don't think any of us want to do, is the people who are operating good businesses, there's no reason to punish them with extra stuff.
Exactly.
But you want to be able to smack the people who start going over that line.
Yes, sir.
And that's what I'd like to get to.
And just for the council's knowledge, we are looking at, we've already met code enforcement, business license, and PD, and we have changed many of the processes with regards to pursuing their business license revocations and citations, and we are issuing citations to the business owner. And it's been pretty effective. Actually, just a notice to comply has been very effective, without even issuing a citation to the business owner. So, it does work.
And the last thing, I know there's been a lot of press about this, but we all know that the press doesn't give a true impression. I mean, they do the same thing with us. I mean, I had to comment on one article in the newspaper, because they said, another person shot in downtown Reno, and it was out by Rattlesnake Mountain. But they put in the headline, downtown Reno. And I think only, I don't want to say only, but one of the incidents happened at a club. One was in an office building. One was people on a spree outside of, they weren't in the club. So, there's a lot of that stuff that goes on, too. I know nobody wants to read that in the paper, but that's the way the reporters reported. It doesn't, I saw something, I just read today, where they did a fact checker on it, and they said, well, it's pretty much, it's not, crime is not going up. In fact, it's down in the entire city of Reno. But we know that doesn't sell papers, Mr. Mayor.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
And maybe we need, you know, when we've, years ago, we passed, we looked at how many liquor stores we had in the redevelopment district. Maybe we need to address and see how many bars we have in the district, and set a limit, just what we've had on the other, and look at it also. That should be something we take into consideration.
Well, let me comment on that right now, Mr. Mayor, if I could. I think what that does is, that sort of rewards the people that we find or have in trouble. If they have competition, and people operate good businesses, they'll go out of business if we do, or if we are able to get these people who are abusing their privilege. I mean, you can bring it up, but that's what I'll say then, too.
No, no, I just, you know, we had so many liquor stores in the district, and hell, maybe we've got more now. I just hadn't looked at it, but I think we set a limit on how many we were going to have in the district. Sure, it's going to make some of them more valuable and stuff like that, but the ones that are misbehaving are going to get penalized somewhere down the road.
Well, one of the things Councilwoman Sfrazza and I were talking about before, is when we talk about licensing, is maybe you have different licensing of even what size bottle you can sell.
Yep.
You know, that's a whole different, okay, that's going to cost you $50,000 if you want that quarter size of Wolf vodka.
And I think we did that on beer bottles and stuff like that, in one of them.
And I think part of the issue, why I think it should be in the license, Mr. Mayor, is that it's the process, Councilwoman Ayazi, of how long it takes for us to shut them down. If we could go in, and once they violate, but they get to appeal, they get to go through this whole long process, when maybe they should have never been granted a license. So, I agree with you, if we could do it that way, but we've been talking about this for, what, four years now, and it's almost impossible for the police department as well. So, I think maybe it's a matrix of looking at how much they're selling, or even if it's a secondary use, Mr. Mayor, because this isn't, I mean, restaurants, we don't have issues with those type of liquor licenses. But I think we have to look at something.
Mr. Asher.
Yeah, I've got a question for staff, when, this might be you, Craig. The, on entry-exit, from what I understand, reading through this, if it's must, you can tie that back to a code or to a statute that says you shouldn't be doing that. So, why doesn't three qualify for a must? Because the way I read three, it says, the licensee should refuse service or notify Reno police of anyone found to be in possession of drugs or controlled substances, or with an unauthorized weapon. Why would that be should instead of must? Notify the police. Doesn't say suspect.
Because I'm not aware of any law that actually requires that.
Really? Okay. So, a bar owner, if he's confronted with somebody in his bar with an unauthorized weapon, there's no requirement to notify the police?
There's no affirmative requirement for somebody to go out and enforce the law, a criminal law.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I thought for sure that they would require them.
And certainly, if it happens, and we get word that it is continuing to happen, we're taking the position, as we review and consider license revocation steps and so forth, that that would certainly be one of the factors we would present to a hearing officer, to show that they are not, if you will, that good cause exists for the revocation or suspension of the license.
There's not even an obligation to notify the police? You don't have to, you know, enforce him or kick him out, but at least notify the cops?
There is no obligation to do that at this point.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you all for the report. We appreciate what you're doing, and the time you're taking out of your lives to put it together, and we will look at these suggestions, and they are suggestions, and I hope that we'll be giving them to all the bar owners and property owners and stuff that are affected, and working with them, and we'll do whatever we can to go, to straighten the laws, and make sure with what law enforcement's doing with code enforcement, it should take care of some of these problems and help settle some of them down. Mr. Guston, you had something?
Well, Mr. Mayor, there's a proposed motion to accept the staff's recommendation.
Okay, have a motion, have a second. Have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one quick.
The motion includes, I'm sorry, the motion includes that we retire the advisory committee? Is that what's intended?
Yes.
They want to retire.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I had stepped out, and for protocol, did counsel take the approval of the minutes item already?
We haven't done the agenda or the minutes.
Because those items, if you retire the committee, they can't vote on approving the prior minutes, so if you could, in order, take that first.
So, we need to approve the agenda and the minutes, and then we can go to this item.
Okay, Mr. George.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
They may have to vote on this also.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much for everything. We really appreciate it.
Now, we can do item six.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, on the minutes, the alcohol advisory committee also needs to take a vote.
Would you like to take a vote?
Is this on the minutes? Is there a motion at the table for the minutes of our last meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item E1.
We didn't vote on it.
No, we got to vote on it. We're going to make presentations, right? Huh? I don't have that. Where is it? My fault. Okay, item six.
We haven't voted, we haven't done anything with that yet.
No.
You won.
Item six.
So, Dan made, Dan will make a, you probably need to redo it.
Okay.
Move to approve the staff recommendation, staff report.
All right, I'm motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
And then you have to do public comment on that agenda, and then we can adjourn that, Mayor.
Anybody getting public comment? No, they don't.
Move to adjourn.
Good, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Chief.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, for the record, Deputy Chief Dave Evans. We are here now to recognize the hard work and commitment of this downtown advisory group, and the work they've done since 2009. I would like, and on behalf of the entire city of Reno, the code compliance, business license, fire department, we'd like to have the group kind of stand up, maybe back here in a line. And we are today going to give them a city certificate. This is not a police department certificate. This is from the city of Reno. certificate, this is from the city of Reno, and the certificate says for your, for the appreciation awarded to the board member's name for outstanding volunteer service on the Downtown Alcohol Advisory Committee dated today, July 13, 2011, and signed by the Honorable Mayor. What I'd like to do is just call up each member, give them their certificate, and then if the council would like to acknowledge them at the end, then do that. So Roberta Ross is the chairman of the group. Roberta?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. This is awarded to you.
And Ms. Verboes would like to say, we couldn't have done it without these two men here, Michael Chomp, two others have just left, the attorney and ordinances, they all have been fabulous. We couldn't have done it without them.
Thank you, Roberta. And then Vice Chairman Derek Clifton. Daryl?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Brock Meilath? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
For your service. Charles Shapiro?
I'll go left.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for your service. James Brown? Sir, thank you very much for your service. David Silverman?
David, very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Is that everybody? Looks like that's everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. If I can impose on the council, I'd like to move item L4, because there's some members that are on this committee that are also members of the Downtown Police Tax Special Assessment District. So could we move to agenda item L4? The reason I put this on the agenda, as always, to have some council input and to find out if we could spend more than two hours in looking at this. And the reason, it was brought up at a recent tax district meeting about the fact about coordinating with various different enforcement teams downtown and safety groups, the CAC, for example, and making sure that the information had a full flow between everyone, so everyone had all the information on people who are doing the wrong things, and it didn't bounce from corner to corner. It actually, there was some kind of direct line of contact. And Daryl, did you want to make any comment about that at all? This is the agenda item we had talked about at the tax district meeting, about getting that reporting in a straight line.
Yes, sir. I'm going to defer to our Vice Chairman Brock Meilath. He's got a statement to read for us.
Okay, Brock.
Good afternoon. For the record, Brock Meilath, Vice Chairman of the Downtown Police Tax District Advisory Committee, and that is a mouthful. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Downtown Police Special Assessment District Advisory Committee has closely monitored the work of the Downtown Alcohol Advisory Committee for the past 15 months. During that time, the committee has been kept abreast of the evolution and eventual abandonment of the proposed Good Neighbor Agreement and the subsequent development of the five recommendations presented by Ms. Ross, Chairperson of the DAC here today. In support of those recommendations, the members of the committee, as representatives of the property owners within the Downtown Police Special Assessment District, have voted unanimously to formally ask the city council to direct the police department, specifically the Downtown Enforcement Team, to actively advise and report any issues related to public safety and welfare within the district to the Community Safety and Service Team, or the CSAS, for immediate review and potential action. It is the hope and expectation that this request will help communicate the resolve of the community to hold all businesses and individuals to the goals and standards of Reno's municipal code. Further, personal note, I would like to be able to ask Mr. Kuschele that he be able to get his private investigator together with the police department and CSAS to review what their observations were for any potential action. If there's any questions?
I don't, any questions at all? I wanted the explanation so you knew why the agenda item. So I think by putting this, giving this to staff to further flush out, we will, with the tax district and the downtown and the CSAS team, we'll work more efficiently, and that's what it's about.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion, can I, I can make the motion that we authorize staff to spend more than two hours in developing the criteria needed. Further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's move back in our agenda, I think, believe we are going to I2.
That's correct. We're on bill number 6759, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 12 Public Works and Utilities, Chapter 12.08, Street Excavations, Article 2, Permit, Section 12.08.080, Fees to Add a Lateral Connection Inspection Fee and Refer to the Fee Schedule for Current Fees Together with Other Matters Property Relating There Too.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I3.
This is bill number 6760, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 6 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6.11, Encroachment Permit, Section 6.11.030, Application to Add Permit and Inspection Requirements for Sewer Lateral Rehabilitation, Section 6.11.040, Fees to Require Fees for Sewer Lateral Rehabilitation Inspections and Refer to the Fee Schedule for Current Fees Together with Other Matters Property Relating There Too.
We have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's move in our agenda, the J-items, City Manager, J2.
Good afternoon. For the record, Maureen McKissick. I'm here with Pete Wallish, the Economic Development Manager, to give you a status report on the Grow Business Fund. I wanted to give you an overview of where we are right now, what the last year has accomplished, and where we would like to go in the future. So I will begin the first part of the presentation and then turn it over to Pete. Whoops. Thank you. Just to recap, these funds come to us every year through HUD, they're CDBG program funds, and the two requirements that come in the door with them are, one, for every $35,000 loaned, one job must be created, and two, that 51% of those jobs must be for individuals who have low or low mod incomes. Last year, six loans were made, five businesses and one micro enterprise totaling $235,000. This would actually have compelled the creation of 6.7 jobs. We are going to create close to 11. So it is performing the way it needs to. At this point this year, there's a fund balance approximately $440,000. As the city is taking it back in-house, it will now be implemented through the Economic Development Manager and through staff and community resources. And as we bring it back in-house, looking at lessons learned in the last year and a half, we are going to propose certain revisions. The staff report goes into these in more detail. This is just an overview of what we think would make more sense, would implement the will of the council better. More flexibility in loan limits, going above $50,000 where the situation called for that. Pete will describe in more detail how we hope to leverage these funds with conventional bank financing and undertake a more formal review and application process. We would like to give the city manager authority to sign loans of up to $75,000. We think that would make the most sense in terms of the applicants and borrowers, frequently who have timeliness issues. This would not encumber it to a council agenda, the timelines for staff reports, and the weeks that can delay that process. So with council's consent, we would like to recommend that. For loans above that, however, we would bring them back to you for approval. This year, for the remainder of 2011, we hope to do a minimum of three loans, create at least 10 jobs, and then Pete will go into more detail on the type of database that we want to create so that we can measure how effective the program is. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pete.
Good afternoon. Pete Wallish, I'm with Development Manager. Within the staff report, there's a series of guidelines that were developed through analysis of different cities across the United States and how they form their loan process, as long, as well as conforming to CDBG standards. We're making the recommendation that staff would return to council for approval for any loans over $75,000. Any loans under $75,000 would be given the approval to the city manager. Staff would conduct full analysis on standard loan policies such as loan-to-value or debt-service coverage ratios, setting minimum standards of 80% loan-to-value and a debt-coverage-service ratio of 1.2. Also, for clarification, within the staff report, if council so desires within the motion, it does state the approval of the program, attached program guidelines. Within the guidelines, it states that city council would make the recommendation of what board would approve the loans or the approvals, giving the approval to the city manager. So when the motion is made, we would ask that the motion be amended to reflect the desire of council on that point.
Councilwoman Frasza.
Yeah, a couple changes I'd like to see made, and we had already done this, if you remember, council approved, and I would like all the loans to come before council for their approval and consent, understand what staff's saying with their financial information, the sensitivity of that, which is fine. I think that can go in front of the FAB. But I think what we're trying to do with this program is spearhead economic development. If it comes on the council agenda, this new businesses is opening with the assistance of the city. So that's the only modification that, I think that the terms are good, what staff has come up with, because we've had some problems with these in the past, as you guys know. The only thing I think we should look at changing is the, I believe, the application fee, the $150 is appropriate, but then you have half a percent from loan origination, then closing fee of 1.5. What I would rather do, instead of doing that, because we're trying to encourage people to open, is that we take the 2%, because staff, I believe, you guys need the funding to administer the program. So I'd rather just take that off the top of the four, whatever we have, the 440, and take that off the top for admin and not pass that on to the borrower. Because our objective here is to try and help the small business, and 4% is a good rate. However, you start adding origination fee and a closing cost to it, that gets up to a 6% loan. So then who's really going to come to us to get that money? So I think the point we're trying to do is, this is kind of a bridge gap, they've got to get their financing, they have to have personal investment in it, but also, we want to keep, the whole point of the program is to keep the interest rate low. So I think you guys could set aside the fees right off the top.
And I wanted to bring you to the very last slide for where we're going with the long-term, because I wanted to point out that when these funds come in, when HUD gives them to us in our annual allocation, and we put them out the door through this program, we're required to do the job creation and the low mod benefit. But when they come back to us as program income, then, we are at liberty to push them out the door again without those restrictions. So over time, if this is properly handled and does become a true revolving loan fund, we will be able to give larger loans, maybe to different kinds of businesses with your direction. So we wanted that to continue to be a tool for the community. We also want to network very much with what the state has under development as that moves So today, we're asking your approval with your comments, Ms. Frasza, on moving forward with what we're proposing to do for this, and if, with your approval, then we will begin implementing.
Let me just ask a question, what Councilwoman Frasza talked about, the $440,000, you're saying the half percent and the one and a half, which is one-time charge, take it off the top, you're saying taking the $8,800 off the 440 to begin with?
Yes, because the problem is, if we're going to have the loan origination, that's similar to what the banks charge. So what, this whole program, what we're trying to do here is, this is really a bridge loan, and I think Pete and Maureen, you guys did a great job of putting this together, because in the past, we've had, before you guys changed the guidelines, there's been some issues, as you know. And even when we went out with the micro initiative, they, there were some issues with some of those loans that were granted. So what I'm saying is, to keep the fee at the lowest, the 4% rate, we should try and keep it at 4% instead of really charging 6%, because if you charge a half a percent, then another percent and a half for the closing costs, you're getting up there in the fees.
I understand, they're one-time charged, but how do we recoup that $8,800? If you loan out all $440,000, 2% of that is $8,800. How do we recoup that?
Well, because I believe under the program, since it's CDBG, we can, can't we cost out for our admin fees?
Again, Pete Wallish, I'm with Development Manager. Just for clarification, the interest rate is 4%. The 2% for loan origination fees is a one-time charge.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry, I understood that, yeah.
And for the $8,800, it would just come off the top, so it would reduce the $440,000 that would be eligible to loan.
That was my question originally.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fine, okay.
I also wanted to point out, one of the other things that staff bore in mind as we put this together, and I know that the council is aware of this, the CDBG program at the federal level is under a tremendous amount of really scrutiny right now and possibly defunding. And so in terms of the money that we have, the $440,000 that remains in the account, without knowing what will happen to CDBG going forward, we want to be the best stewards possible of this remaining funding, and we thought that, looking at it down the road, this would be the way to safeguard that.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Asher?
Just want to make sure I understand the protocol. So once you receive an application, does it come to us for approval before it goes to the FAB, or does it go to the FAB first review, and then it comes to us with the recommendation?
It will come to staff first.
Right. But then after that, does it go to the FAB, then us?
Correct.
That has been the protocol up until now, and we were not suggesting changing that.
Okay. All right.
I guess, then it was approved by council, on what grounds would we have to deny it for whatever reason? How would we say, no, we don't want to listen, make that loan to XYZ Company? That the staff has approved and FAB's approved?
Well, we could, I guess how I see this working, it's no different than when our NABs approve funding, or Arts and Culture Commission approves those grants, it ultimately comes to us for approval. And that's how I see this working, is that the FAB, they would go to the FAB with the applications, and then ultimately, we would get the final approval, which should be done anyway, because it's public money.
It would more almost be a ratification process.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a presentation. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to staff recommendation.
We have a motion, a second?
With the changes? Here are those two changes?
Yeah, with the changes that were discussed.
With the fee coming off the top of the total grant. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move, Mr. Mayor, if you want to regain here, the Boards and Commissions, K1.
Arts and Culture Commission.
Continue to advertise, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ward three, Neighborhood Advisory.
Move to appoint Ann Woodring.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ward one.
Mr. Mayor, it says there are four applicants, and yet there are five names here, and we did, I don't have the notes right now, but we did, I did make a motion last time to appoint those three people, so.
Yes, they were appointed.
They were appointed, okay, so that's just.
No actions necessary.
Okay, so this is unnecessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
The invocation for future agenda items. Mr. Asher?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we were approached, I think it was you and I, we were approached by people from the balloon races, they wanted to do a 9/11 memorial.
Yes.
And they wanted some help with purchasing American flags to hand out, so we'd like to, they're looking for $2,000 or $2,500, I think, from, maybe from council donation
from council donation funds.
I think it was, they needed twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars.
Something like that, but we'll get that number from them, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, do you want to put it, do we need to put a number right now, or can we supplement it later?
Tracy Jase, Reno City Attorney's Office. No, you cannot identify it as a future agenda item for a donation to them with an amount that will be determined.
Okay, all right. Any others?
Councilman, can I make one request, when that goes back? There is a company, and I've forgotten where they are, the United States, I think one or two are the only companies that make American flags, we buy from that company.
I thought we did that at the last veterans day.
We will find out.
Make sure we're not buying them from that other country.
We made sure they were cloth, and we tried to see if they were made here.
That's right, not plastic. All right, any other items? Okay. Any liaison reports?
Just tomorrow, Mr. Mayor, for flood control, we have on the agenda the executive director and the legal counsel. We got a lot of applications for both, so we'll be going through what we're going to do tomorrow. I'm not sure how we're going to handle that yet, but we'll be going through the first part. But who said we needed a national search?
We have thirty applicants for...
Thirty applicants, yeah.
I haven't been keeping up with that, but, you know, last time, we had two applicants. Remember that?
And we have some, I was reviewing all of them, we have some very good applicants for both.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Any other reports? Reports on any conference or professional meetings? Okay, L-four, you've done. L-six? Ms. Zedra?
This was something I've been wanting to do, there's an existing condition...
There's an existing condition in the Peckham Lane area, so this is a text amendment that we need to have some staff time to address, so that we don't have an issue with it.
Just clarification, Sharon, would this allow, like, a home care center, if somebody wanted to have a childcare center in their home?
This would be, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, this would be for potentially a childcare center, a commercial center. Right now, you can already do the in-home ones, so up to six children. This would be a commercial one, in the SF, we're thinking the larger zones, not four, six, and nine, but the fifteen, and maybe some of the LLRs. A lot of the churches are located in those districts, and they're larger lots, we would look at it, all childcare centers have to have access to collectors, so it's not going to be in the middle of a residential neighborhood, it would be the ones on, collectors are larger.
Why are they prohibited now?
They used to be allowed, we believe it was removed in the O-two update, and so there are a lot of existing ones also, in these areas, so it would, it was just, it would clean up a lot of those situations. And it's all through a special use permit, anyway, so we can look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Second. Okay, motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, note, motion carries unanimously. Possible action, discussion, potential direction regarding a neighborhood plan for midtown area?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've been approached, I'm su, I think Councilman Guston has as well, we've got a development going through on the vacant lot there, on Toma, Virginia, and also, they bought some stuff that we're glad they bought.
Yep.
And, but other businesses along there, and Dan and I share it, and I think, Sharon, you may have a piece too, depending on where the boundary ends up, but this would just allow us to have a town hall meeting and determine, they want to come forward with a neighborhood plan, I know those are time-intensive, but they just want some, like, a boundary, and some changes within that plan, so they can, they really want to redevelop the area around there.
I'd like to add to that, there was a presentation recently to the Planning Commission about revitalizing that area, and I brought up in a meeting this morning, that I only caught part of it, so I can't remember the exact details of it, but the, they were talking about refreshing the area, if you will. And, you know, we had the plan downtown, and we were going to go forward, and then the money evaporated, and then, out of the direction of John Hester, there was also, and the lady who is no longer with the redevelopment agency, I've forgotten her name, but remember the presentation made, we're talking about brick buildings, we're talking about facing, we're talking about taking down signage, and make it look, the buildings are really beautiful that are there, if we just clean them up. And I just wanted to alert you, and the presenters who made that, that it looked to me like they were modernizing a little bit, and I would just like to say that, if you stay with traditional styles and overview, like we did downtown, it would be a continuation of that, all the way out to Plum Lane, that midtown area is being revitalized, and people are moving in, and small businesses are actually flourishing there, but not to go away, too far away from what we had already done, simply because, ten years from now, you'll come back, and it will look dated. But if you stay with a traditional look, and there's a lot of that, obviously, down there, on that street, that, I'd like to point that new, that refacing, that redevelopment along South Virginia Street, on both sides of our ward, on one and three, to stay with at least that look, and look what we have done so far, and what has been suggested so far, and then, when it comes back to us eventually, because I don't remember seeing that kind of presentation to the Planning Commission when it was made, so I just wanted to bring that up, because I know you're vitally interested in that midtown area, and promoting that, and I think this is another part of that.
Yeah, the gateway, and I think included in that is where we are with the T-21 funding, because council approved that to be the next leg, and Sharon, you talked about Plum, so that would be the first thing, is establishing that boundary, and I agree, keeping that continuity, but I think there needs to potentially be some cleanup of zoning around there, too, so.
Good, done, good. Okay. All right, anything else there?
Do we need a motion on that, for more than two hours?
Yeah, let's take a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, note, motion carries unanimously. Recognition of good deeds.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'm Chris Good with the City Manager's Office, with the good news presentation. I think I have three items to bring to your attention this afternoon. First one is, youth group from the South Reno Methodist Church took a ninety-minute tour recently of the Community Assistance Center, were very impressed with the operations, and undertook to start cleaning the windows thereafter, with the material that they brought themselves. So another good volunteer effort, making a real difference at the Community Assistance Center. They have additional plans to come back later in the summer, after holding a drive, to collect sunscreen for residents at the family shelter, and so they're going to, they plan to bring the sunscreen to the shelter for the residents there. Another alternative energy development in the city of Reno, the Veterans Hospital, is going geothermal. They were able to use a seven-million-dollar grant from the Federal Veterans Administration to develop a contract, to convert to geothermal energy for heating the facility. The picture that you're looking at is not geothermal energy, that's an earlier project that they used, to put solar panels on top of the outpatient clinic, so they're really getting out ahead on the use of alternative energy. This is a demonstration, a second one in a short period of time, of smaller geothermal projects within the city of Reno. The Pepper Mill Casino, with their recent expansion, they also developed geothermal energy there, and this is a new development in this field of geothermal energy, to use it for smaller types of installations. So once again, Reno is out in front on alternative energy. Finally, I would just like to bring to your attention, and to anybody watching or listening, that the city of Reno is participating in an Easter Seals clothing drive this month, through the month of July, at three locations, City Hall primarily, but also, the Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center, and the Neil Road Community Center. At each of those three locations, we have barrels out in the public areas, we ask people to consider taking clean clothing in bags to one of those places, and dropping them off. What Easter Seals does with that, is they sell that clothing at their thrift store. The proceeds from those sales go to benefit adults and children with disabilities in our community. They point out that well over ninety, ninety percent, I want to say it's ninety-five percent of the benefit goes to people within Northern Nevada, right in our community. So that's going on through the month of July, please consider, if you're going to visit one of those facilities, contributing some clothing to that effort. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, yes, sir.
I have one thing to add, I didn't get to talk to Mr. Good this morning, but I'd like to pass on some really good news. I think council will remember, a few months ago, there was an assessment for Westfield Village, to get their streets redone, and I remember receiving a communication from Mr. Hesjev, because I wasn't here that night, I was home, on my back in bed, sick, watching the presentation. Mr. Hesjev wanted to make sure that I knew what went on that night, so I did follow through on that. But back in February, the neighbors, as any assessment, you know, we've all seen it, we will see it again tonight, when our six o'clock meeting, they're somewhat apprehensive about having to spend money, or why the money, or the quotes that are made, et cetera. And so, we had a meeting in February, I was well-supplied with information by Public Works, and Charlie Honey, in particular, was a great help to me, along with John Flansberg. So we sat down with the neighbors, had a meeting for about three hours in their neighborhood, told them what was going to happen, and what, how they could take advantage of it. And you always hope that the best happens. Well, Sunday, they had a block party, potluck, get-together in the afternoon, and I just want to tell the people listening, not only was our contractor outstanding, but our staff followed through on everything, and the sewer hookups, we expected maybe to get six or eight, we ended up, John, I think, told me, today was forty-five. Unbelievable number, because people realize, even in these hard times, spending four thousand dollars was the right thing to do at this time, as opposed to when it fails at sixteen thousand. So I want to pass on the good deeds to our staff, and the contractor that worked on that, because, to a person, the people that I talked to at this potluck block party, they were thrilled with what the city did, how they followed through, how they informed them, what they were going to do, kept on top of it, it was really a great experience for those people, and what's happened is, you will see the pride of ownership in the Westfield Village, people are actually redoing their front yards, maybe have not done them before, are doing them, and it's really a great little community, always has been, but now it's got a real spirit to it.
That's good, thank you. All right, M-two, discussion, potential direction, progress of consolidation, shared service.
How you feel about those liquor licenses, Bob?
Has anybody got four quarters for a dollar, I want to get the mayor going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Susan Schlerf, Assistant City Manager, this is actually a council item, but the manager had requested that we bring to you a little of the background on the Shared Services Elected Officials Committee, as well as some potential options. Those were listed for you in the staff report, obviously, there could be mix and match, anything in between, it basically goes the gamut, from simply eliminating the city's participation altogether, to focusing the work that staff and the electeds do. So if I can give you any further information, again, this was actually an item for the council, we just wanted to provide you with some specifics.
Maybe on Monday?
My understanding is, there is one scheduled, yes.
Well, we'll see if everybody shows up, this one.
With you, from the county, from the county.
Oh, from the county? Bretternets.
Mr. Bretternets.
Kitty Jones.
Kitty will be in Washington.
Well, we'll show up and see if they're there.
Just so you know, because we tried to call a joint fire advisory board meeting for Monday, and we were told that they're out of town at NACO.
Oh, that's good.
So, you know, given that, maybe we should have Sue, Mr. Manager, a call placed over to them, to ensure that their other member, indeed, will be there, so that we don't send our ten or eleven staff members, as well as us hear from the dais over there for a no-show again.
We will be in recess till the hour of six o'clock, on item N-one, be in recess till the hour of six. Is... In opposition?
Yes, David Spearly and Robert Saunders.
Okay. All right. And so, all the notices have been sent, and everything?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to talk about the Special Assessment District, yes, sir.
For the record, Steve Hardesty, Assessment District Coordinator, Public Works. Mr. Mayor, Council, this will be the final public hearing brought before you regarding city of Reno, 2010, Special Assessment District Number Two, North Gate. Before you for approval is the resolution dispensing with protests and objections to the assessment roll. The ordinance confirming the proceedings will be brought back to you at a future date, and go through the regular ordinance introduction, ordinance adoption format. Council created the Assessment District by adopting ordinance number 6176 on February 28, 2011. This district was created for the purpose of purchasing roughly one hundred acres of the former North Gate Golf Course. The Assessment District was posted on June 22, 2011, certified letters were mailed on June 21, and public notice was published in the Gazette Journal on June 30. There are no hardship applications. Total number of parcels being assessed, one hundred and thirty-one. Total assessments, one million, two-hundred thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. The notice to property owners listed four criteria for protesting and objecting to levying of the assessments in this district, that's covered under NRS 271.385. They included the assessment roll, that'd be if I had the wrong APN or anything in there like that, ownership of the property was listed incorrectly, property that was listed was not located within the designated areas. The second criteria would be the correctness of the assessment, whether or not there was a mistake made in the method of the formula. Preliminary assessments are presumptively valid, as you approved them back in February, and the burden of proof is, to the contrary, rests with the objector. The other, the third criteria would be the amount of the assessment, whether or not I made a mistake in calculating, or the application of the formula. And the fourth criteria would be the regularity, or the correctness of the proceedings, and this would be from the end of the first public hearing to date, that'd be issues such as posting, noticing, mailing, and all those things. There was one letter of protest received before the deadline of three business days, prior to the public hearing, that deadline was July 8, 2011. Another letter was received by me, via my email, late Sunday afternoon, which made it late. That one would be from Mr. Saunders, and Mr. Saunders is here tonight. The letter of protest that was in on time had two objections, primarily two objections. The first objection was that the sixty-seventh percent from the petition was not achieved. This was addressed by the council, and the first public hearing had found to be without merit, therefore, is not an appropriate ground for objection or protest, and is not a ground for consideration at the time of the final hearing, as listed in the public notice. His second objection, using the 2009, 2010 appraised values throughout the process, this too is addressed in the first public hearing, and also found to be without merit, therefore, this objection also is not appropriate ground for objection or protest, and the same statement as above. Mr. Saunders provided a letter in opposition to the project, according to the address provided in his email, he currently does not reside in the district, this is not prohibited objections, however, his letter received after the deadline of July 8, and his objections do not fall within the established criteria stated in the notice. That's my presentation, if I have any questions.
Okay, we have some public comment, now, anybody that wants to speak, fill out one of these blue sheets, over with the secretary, because we'll let everybody speak that wants to speak. Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Purpose of my objection?
Give me your name, for the record. I did it anyway, but you...
in the notice. That's my presentation, if you have any questions.
Okay, we have some public comment. Now, anybody that wants to speak, fill out one of these blue sheets, over with the secretary, because we'll let everybody speak that wants to speak. Mr. Saunders?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Purpose of my objection?
Give me your name, for the record. I did it anyway, but you need to do it.
You had asked me to come up, so I assumed. Anyway, Robert Saunders. And I live outside of what is determined to be the Assessment District, but I have concerns about this setting a precedent. And the precedent is this, we've got rough economic times, the city is certainly going through it, our state is, our nation is, private individuals are. And I think it is inappropriate that we say, here's a piece of land, let's develop it, we don't have money, but let's get money from the people that live near it. And I think that precedent needs to be stopped, because you can do whatever you want next time, and it's a different group of people, may include me. And in today's economic times, we've got people that their houses are being foreclosed, all around our neighborhood. People are not able to pay their own bills. And so, my concern is that, if you don't have money, you don't do it. And I think that applies to the city, too, like it does, or should, to any government. And if you don't have money, don't go to people that are so strapped, that they can't take care of their own bills and ask for additional money. That's my concept. I think that, as a group representing the people of the city, you have a responsibility to act in the best interests of the people in this city. And I don't think this is that.
But if sixty-seven percent of the people voted for it, to assess themselves, should we not do it?
That's a problem, okay? And I understand, people had their opportunity, and they voted for it, for whatever reason. My concern goes beyond what those people said. I'm not in that group of people.
But they all signed a thing saying they wanted it, and I'm just wondering if we should ignore them?
In this instance, perhaps not, because you have grounds to say, they want it, we do it.
That's right.
Okay, and I understand that concept.
Yes.
I don't want to see additional things coming out that are challenging people economically in today's world.
We will never do anything to take advantage of them.
Well, anyway.
Yes, Mr. Fraser, you had a question?
Can I ask a question, because I...
Turn off the clock.
I guess the couple of letters that we received, too, make it sound like we're getting this property to develop it in some way. I just want that, I mean, for the record, I thought this was being preserved as, I mean, that's why we're doing the assessment, is to preserve the open space, so it doesn't get developed with homes, which technically it could revert to being developed, this piece of property.
I understand your concept. In today's world, I don't know, many builders would want to develop homes in that area.
But when you're talking about open space, you're talking about forever. So, this site would be preserved, I mean, that's the whole purpose of the neighborhood coming forward, it would be preserved forever.
If you do nothing with it, it's still preserved for a long time. In today's economy, nobody's going to step forward and say, I want to spend a lot of money here. So, the preservation of the land will take care of itself.
I'm not sure I agree with you, we've seen this rodeo before, and the way that land prices are now, I mean, it could potentially be much higher ten years from now, we just don't know.
By everything that I've heard, we're talking two to three decades before we get back to high property values. You've got a long time to consider something like this. That's just where I am. I think there's a lot of time that could be done before money is spent to, this is a form of development, it's not raw land anymore, it's being developed as something other than homes, it's being developed as a recreational facility.
But the homeowners around wanted it.
Point made.
Mr. Guston, you had something? Mr. Hesha?
No, I was going to say, this is where I think your logic may be misplaced, because what developers are doing now are picking up land very cheaply, and the product they're selling is a hundred and thirty to two hundred thousand dollar product, as opposed to half a million to a million dollar product. So, Councilman Azee, I think, was instrumental in trying to preserve this land for open space, because the homeowners that actually agreed to the assessment understood that this property could be developed, and it could be developed with a product that's about a hundred and thirty to two hundred thousand dollars, not a really nice product to be right next to their home. So, believe it or not, people are still selling homes, they're just in a different price range.
I understand that concept. In today's world, cash is king, okay? And developers know that. I've made my point, I'll let you go.
Thank you very much. Now, I have no other sheets for talking. Anybody want to say, you come on up, come on up, you can finish filling it later. Anybody else have anything to say, raise your hand when she finishes, but we need you to fill out one of these blue sheets, over with the secretary, if you want to speak. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, my name's Christine Retcher.
Speak into the mic, please.
I'm Christine Retcher, and I am a homeowner on the Northgate perimeter. And I'm just concerned that when we purchase this with our assessments, what's going to happen afterwards? There's no water rights to the property, and what about weed abatement? We have the cheat grass right up to our fences, and I called and tried to get some answers, but I don't have any answers. I want to make sure that we're not going to be assessed, but yet, the weed situation will be taken care of, and anyway.
Mr. Azee, you want?
Yes, when this was originally brought up, and the adjacent property owners came forward with the, this isn't something the city initiated, it was the property owners initiated this SAD. We told them upfront that there's no money to develop this property, so it will be as open space, which means it's going to get no more or less than we have all the other open space in the northwest. So, there won't be a lot of weed abatement or anything else like that, unless there's money to be found to actually start developing this property. So, there's, that's what's going to happen, it will sort of stay where it is, we're going to try to get some water rights later, as, after we get the property, then we can start looking at plans to see how we're going to develop this. But as of now, you're absolutely correct, there's no money to do any of that stuff.
So, it's a fire hazard, though?
And it would be a fire hazard if we didn't do this. It would be the same thing with the people who own the property, they don't have anything that they have to do either. It's just like, if you live on, there's thousands of houses up there who join on open land, open space. And we don't go take back weeds in their backyard either, it's just open space.
Well, what is going to happen, this is for a hundred acres?
Correct.
Isn't it two hundred and twenty-five or fifty acres?
The way that it works is, because this was initiated by the residents, they had to buy a certain amount of it with the amount of money that they were assessed. They weren't assessed enough to buy the entire project. So, they're buying the hundred acres, and I don't know if we have a map up there, but it's going to be all behind their houses. And also, because it was by the citizens, it has to perpetually be placed in the way they bought it. So, the city can't sell it for development later on, ever, this hundred acres. That's why they wanted it behind the homes, instead of just the city owns it, and then the city council of future time could sell it. That can't be done with this hundred acres. So, it will be perpetually as parkland, and it can't be sold in the future. Then, we got four hundred thousand from Washoe County that we have to parcelize another parcel out for, that's also open space, because we use their open space money for that. And then, we have another four hundred thousand dollars from the City of Reno Parks that we have available in that area to do that, and that's going to purchase the rest of the land. That's how it all works out.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to explain it more later on, if you want.
Okay, thank you.
And a lot of the homeowners around the golf course are taking it in their own hands and cutting the grass back, so they don't have fire problems and stuff.
Well, I just, I want to make sure that we won't get another assessment in order to prevent.
We haven't done that with anybody else up there to do that kind of work.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak? Before I close the public comment section, does anybody else wish to speak? Because I'm going to close the public comment section, I want to make sure anybody who wants to speak, can speak. Do you two ladies wish to speak? Nothing's happened so far.
Come on up, and we'll just ask a question, and we can address anything you want.
We haven't, we haven't done anything. He's done a briefing of what's gone on, and that's basically it, and other people have gotten up and spoken and asked questions.
So, do you want me to fill out the piece of paper?
When you're finished, all it is, is just sign your name, you want to speak.
Okay, my name is Nanette Simbach, and I'm a homeowner up there at Northgate Golf Course. I purchased my property back in ninety-nine because of the golf course, and, you know, hoping that it would, you know, keep the property value. Of course, with property values and the market doing what it's doing, and now that the golf course is now gone, my understanding was that a family actually owned the piece of property in the beginning, and it was grandfathered in. And I apologize for saying this, but I, like we said, we missed the beginning.
No, no, you go ahead.
So, it was my understanding that that piece of, that two hundred and fifty acres, whatever it is, was actually grandfathered in for open space. Is that where this is currently now, that it will remain as open space?
If we follow up on this, and we purchase it all, it will remain as open space, as parkland.
Okay.
It's just a little bit different than open space. But if we didn't do this, it would revert back to the trust that owns the property, and they could, it would just be private property, and they can do with it, with the current zoning they have. But they could come request zoning changes, and just like any other piece of property up there.
Okay, so, the assessment that I actually received, that was like twenty dollars a month, you know, two hundred and forty dollars a year for this, is that where it still remains now, too, as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, that has not changed?
That can't change.
So, bottom line is, is that it will remain as open space, or, or what you were saying, a park, or?
Parkland.
A parkland. Then, who will actually maintain that parkland?
It'll be owned by the City of Reno.
Okay.
So, it'll be our responsibility to maintain it however we want to. What we're talking about with the people living up there is, if you wanted to form a group, like they did at Rancho San Rafael, Friends of Rancho San Rafael, and start deciding what it is you want to do up there, the next ten or twenty, or even thirty years, how long Rancho San Rafael's taken.
Okay.
Start working on those kind of things.
So, if we wanted trails, or whatever, we could actually put that in?
Correct.
Okay, the other thing is, though, too, is that I had a question regarding Somerset, because Somerset then backs up against it on the east, or on the west side of it, I back up on the east side of the golf course. Are they being assessed, too, as well? Are they going to be contributing into the funds of this?
Every residence that abuts the golf course will be paying a portion.
Okay, so, everybody. So, how many homes is that in total?
One hundred and thirty-one.
Okay, one hundred and thirty-one. Is it still for two million dollars? Is that what the city is actually purchasing it for? Because that was what my information was when I got it back in October of 2009.
It might end up being as much as two point eight million, because we're working out an arrangement with the trust that it went to. They're agreeing to take some, some future monies, if it comes in, for park tax money that we get. If they build more houses in Somerset, they will get more money. If they don't build it, they don't get it. So, it's a maximum of two point eight, but this assessment is one point two million of that.
Okay, and you were saying that the hundred acres that is previously owned by the homeowners, is that correct?
This will purchase a hundred acres.
So, this will purchase a hundred acres?
Correct.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I think I have a map here, I'll show you after the meeting.
Yeah, I would be real curious just to see what that is. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Fill out a form, if you would, if you, do you wish to speak, ma'am? Okay. Sir, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do.
Well, come on up, then you can fill out the form later.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Now, you're free to speak, so please let us know. Yes, sir?
As a former Californian...
Identify yourself for the record.
Okay, I'm Walt Voight, I live in Somerset, I too got the hundred acre letter. Last year, we moved from California to here, and so, now we enjoy tax-free basis and all that stuff, except that we're already paying double the property tax that we did in California for a similar house. So, we were offered to buy parts of this golf course previously, which we declined to do. And now, it seems like we're being assessed for it. And quite honestly, I think it would be open to all of these citizens of Reno, so I don't know why, just because I live by it, that I will be assessed for it, but not the people in Reno. Our community, the Somerset community, has set aside land for parks, has dedicated trails to ride bikes on, skateboard, whatever else you want to do on them. So, we've pretty much paid for that stuff. We paid for it when we bought into the Somerset community, we had to buy in, and we're paying a hundred and fifty dollars a month to enjoy those things. And now, it seems like I'm being blindsided by some land that frankly, excuse me, but it seems like nobody really wants, or not enough people want it, to chime in and make it open to the whole city of Reno, and let them pay for it, instead of just the people in Somerset.
Well, people in Somerset aren't the only ones paying for it. Sixty-seven percent of the people that abud up to the golf course, voted to assess themselves to buy that. The golf, the convention authority turned it back. Now, if the county didn't do anything, then the developer got it back, that was part of the deed restriction. They could build houses, they could do anything they wanted to do, or apply to do anything they wanted to do for those areas. Sixty-seven percent of the homeowners said they wanted to control it and make it open space and parks and stuff, and that's why we're doing it. And we haven't blindsided, because unless you just moved there, because it's been on the records for a long time.
Okay, yeah, we moved there in late last year.
Yes, sir, Mr. Azee.
Yes, and again, the original purchase price of the total could be up to two point eight million, and this assessment is one point two million. So, the property owners up there are paying approximately forty-three percent, and everybody else is paying the other fifty-seven percent.
The rest of Reno?
Reno, Washoe County, Washoe County put some money, even people outside of Reno, some people who bought into that, not general fund money, but money we had set aside to build parks.
Okay.
Do you abud up against the golf course?
Yes, we do.
You abud up against it?
Right.
Thank you, if you'd fill out it. I'll give you one more shot, come on. The other lady didn't speak, so I'll let you say something.
She didn't have to fill out a piece of paper. She and I both live up there, and I don't specifically bud up right up against the golf course, so I really would like to see that.
Ask him, he might know, I mean, he's got a list of...
Property owners who might not be part of it.
Because you said there's a hundred people that actually bud up against the golf course that are supposed to be...
One hundred and thirty-one.
Hundred and thirty-one, okay.
You may not be one of them.
Because I would like to see that. Yeah, okay.
Look through this list, and if you're not, your name's not on there, you're not in it.
The other thing, I, because the paperwork that I got back in October of 2009, it said the assessed value was two million. Why is it now two point eight million when property value and land is just plummeting? I don't understand why there's, I mean, that's almost a million dollars that this is increasing, so I don't understand why the increase.
That's probably why you think you're in this Assessment District, the property owners originally went out and said, we want to make a bigger district, so more people would pay for it, and that would be the two million, and they didn't get enough signatures for that. So, they went, made it smaller, and said, now we'll go to one point two million. So, this assessment, the price of the property stayed the same. In fact, it's gone down. Originally, two years ago, it was five point eight million dollars they wanted for the property.
Okay, okay, so it has gone down.
So, there's been two different signature drives up there by the residents, and you were probably in the first one.
Right.
And you might not be in this, in this one that's actually...
Okay, yeah, because mine, like I said, I think it was either October or November of 2009 that I actually signed it.
So, that shows this gentleman how long we've been working on this.
Right, well, it's been even way before that, too. So, okay, thank you.
And the reason Mr. Azee started this was because the developer was going to replan it, and probably wanted to subdivide it. Now, the economy's gone to hell in a half-basket, so he probably didn't want to develop it now, but he would have had those rights to come in and develop, and it didn't have to be on acre lots either, it could be on half-acre lots, it could be just about whatever he proposed. All right, now, any other people? I'm trying to be fair and let everybody speak. Anybody else wish to speak? Because I'm getting ready to cut off the public comment and bring it back to the council. Okay, hearing no others, seeing no others, I'm cutting off the public comment, and bringing it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Azee?
Do we need a resolution read, Mr. Mayor?
Resolution number 7616. A resolution dispensing with certain protests and objections to the assessment role for the City of Reno, Nevada, 2010, Special Assessment District Number Two, Northgate, and confirming said assessment role and the assessments therein, ratifying action previously taken in connection with said district, and providing for related matters thereto.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 7616. I move to adopt Resolution Number 7616.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Guston?
The only thing I want to bring out is a couple of things that I have heard, and I discussed them with Councilman Ayazi, and that is that some of it was said tonight, some of it wasn't. If you don't abut up to it, you're not in the district. The second thing is the assessment. What happens if, after a few years, I don't pay the assessment? And what happens is you can't lose your house. Right, Steve? You can't, we don't, the City of Reno does not come and get your house, but there's an assessment against that parcel if it is not paid until it is sold. Is that correct?
No, sir. Once you've, once you've failed to make your payment, they'll send you an updated bill once a month for about three months with interest and penalty. And then, at the end of the three months, they'll file foreclosure papers on the home, and usually, within a month or so after that, they'll put it up for auction.
So, if you don't complete the assessment, it could be under foreclosure?
Yes.
And it is a, the assessment for each, I don't know what the average is, but my recollection was there were $3,000 to $4,000. Is that correct?
No, sir. They run from about $4,000 at the bottom end to $22,000 to $23,000 on the top end.
Okay. More than I thought, then.
And over what period of time?
30 years.
30 years. Yeah.
So, that's $4,000 spread over 30 years? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. You say 30, I mean, you're scared, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, the numbers you're talking about are at the top-end numbers. But if I had a parcel up there and I wanted to pay it off, for whatever reason, it wouldn't be anywhere near the $24,000 you're talking about.
No, sir. That's the principal, that's, the assessment is actually...
Principal land interest over 30 years.
The principal is the principal, and then, the interest would be added on top of that. So, if you paid that off in the first 30 days, then there's no interest, there's no penalties, no, no anything. After the 30-day period, it'll go into the financing program. Interest starts, and if you wanted to pay it off, let's say, five years into it, then there's a 2% to 3% prepayment penalty.
I understand that. But the assessments range from $4,000 to $24,000?
Yes, sir.
Even if I paid it off in five days, there are some assessments that high?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Frazee?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, because I think the residents bring up some good points on the maintenance issue. And I think that what Councilman Ayazi's tried to do here is very good. I mean, I have Rosewood in my district, and we've been discussing that. But I think there's something, I know he's been working very hard, and I think we'll come up with a plan to do something up there. Because I've been up to the property, and I think it's really unfortunate what the RSCBA did to the homeowners up there.